All right, it looks like we're all here, so why don't we go ahead and get started? So, good afternoon and welcome to our 1:30 PM session of the September 8th, 2020, meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. I have a few announcements and then we'll move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast on community television, Channel 25, and streaming on the city's website, cityofstancrucus.com. All members of the city council are participating in this meeting remotely and want to thank the public for staying home to view today's city council meeting. If you wish to comment on an agenda item today, call in at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through your phone. Please note that there's a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it's time for public comment, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it's your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes, and you may hang up once you've commented on your item of interest. And with that, I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Byers?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Golda?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Here.
And Mayor Cummings?
Here. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the unceded territory of the Oaxaca-speaking Yupi tribe. The Almudson tribal band comprised of descendants of indigenous people taken to Mission Santa Cruz in San Juan Batista during Spanish colonization of the central coast is today working hard to restore traditional stewardship practices on these lands and heal from historic trauma. So, the first couple items on our agenda today, we have a few proclamations to make. The first one is proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And joining us today is Brittany Maldonado-Goslin, Deputy Director of Jacob's Heart. And so, we can start by, I'll start by reading some of the language within the proclamation and then invite up Ms. Maldonado to speak on behalf of the group.
Um, Mayor Cummings, sorry.
Yes.
It's Bonnie. I just got an email, and it's actually going to be Lori Butterworth from Jacob's Heart.
Oh, okay. Great. So, Lori Butterworth is on. We'll invite you to speak after reading a few of the lines in the proclamation. "So whereas the care of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable, and whereas each year, one in 285 children in our community are diagnosed with cancer, whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenial anomalies, and AIDS combined, and whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported by steadfastly adhering to the following commitments. One, parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved of financial fears to be able to focus their attention on their children. Two, no child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Three, families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And four, no seriously ill child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of the lack of transportation. And whereas the oncology department at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for the past 22 years as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of families of children with cancer in Santa Cruz, whereas it is important for all Santa Cruz residents to recognize the impact of childhood cancer on families within our community and honor the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Santa Cruz and encourage all citizens to join me in honoring Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for its 22 years of outstanding support to our community and acknowledging its contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month." So, I'm not sure if someone from Jacob's Heart is on the call.
I think she's trying to sign into her audio now.
Yeah, it looks like she just signed in. Welcome and thank you for, thank you for joining us today.
Oh yeah, let me unmute. Yeah, unmuted, wait a minute.
Oh, we can hear you.
Oh, great, great, thanks. Sorry, I just got the Zoom link. Hi, everyone. You see, hi.
So, we just read some language from the proclamation. We're wondering if you'd just like to say a few words about the work that you all are doing?
Sure, yeah. Especially now during COVID. I think you all can imagine how trying this has been. So, kind of a history of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, I'll start with that. It started in 1999 in a parking lot that used to be, do you remember the old Harley-Davidson parking lot, which, yeah, when it was Harley-Davidson parking lot? We did the mural right there, and we collected signatures to declare September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the state of California. And it was signed then by then-Governor Gray Davis. And I'm here in my office, and the original proclamation is hanging on the wall here. I can take you over here to show you. This is the original proclamation signed in 1999. And so, we're very proud that our small organization here in Santa Cruz started this groundswell of support and love for children with cancer. So, for 22 years, Jacob's Heart has been here supporting kids with cancer and their families. And no one could have anticipated what we were, what was going to befall these children and families this year. I'm sure all of you can imagine that the isolation for families who have a child with cancer right now has intensified, the fear is intensified, and we've lost five precious children to cancer during this COVID crisis. And it's, it's hard to even describe what families are going through right now. But at the same time, in the midst of all of that, what we've seen here at Jacob's Heart is an outpouring of love and support from this community like no one could have ever imagined. I've been able to witness it for 22 years, but nothing like this year. People show up with, I mean, one of the first things they showed up with was hand sanitizer for every one of our families, toilet paper, when everybody else was hoarding toilet paper, some people were bringing it to us. Food, we've been delivering groceries every week to the doorsteps of families, and the food keeps coming, from Simono's Bakery to De La Comena, to all these places bring food so we can deliver it to the doorstep so parents don't have to go out and risk going to the grocery store. Masks, you name it, people are thinking of Jacob's Heart, and that really speaks volumes to the community where this started, in that parking lot in 1999 for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to now, where this month of September, we're not able to gather the way we would like to, but the gathering of love and support, we have been able to deliver $125,000 in rent assistance to families to make sure, not just rent assistance, but also funeral assistance and utilities, and to pay their bills because, you know, parents are getting laid off, and all of that ripple effect. But, and what keeps me going and keeps all of this going is at the same time, this community cares. And so, I can't thank you enough for the proclamation. Every year, like, we re-declare this because it's important. So, with that, I just want to say thank you and thanks to this community. There's no better place to live.
Thank you for all the amazing work that you all are doing to help these families and these children during such a difficult time. I don't know if there's any other council members who wanted to, who had any comments they wanted to make, or if they wanted to say anything. Councilmember Golda.
I just would like to thank Lori and all of the people at Jacob's Heart that worked tirelessly for this super-important organization. And I've been to fundraisers for, I don't even know, probably 18 years. I've been going to different, various fundraisers, and I always just see the level of positivity and love from the families that are going through this, along with other members of the community. And I just, you know, as a lucky parent of two healthy kids, can't imagine what these families that are experiencing this are going through. And I just can't thank you and the rest of your organization enough. And I know I'm speaking for probably all of us up here, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, and then Councilmember Watkins.
Hi, too. Just want to say thank you for all of the work you do. I have friends who have been supported by Jacob's Heart and just can't thank you enough for all of the work you do. I wanted to ask if there are ways that people who are listening or watching can support you, what's the best way to do that? And just so we can announce that here and also know for ourselves how to help out.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, thank you for that. So, donations are always welcome, especially now. Like, was just mentioned, our events, we haven't, we're not able to have our fundraising events this year, and September and October are always the times when we do that. So, jacobshart.org is our website. We are able to have a few volunteers now, we're very careful about that, so there's a whole protocol that we need to go through, but we do need help delivering groceries, and there's training and all that that people can do. And also, but, but really, I think it's the financial support right now, like, from, you know, $10, $20, $25, all of that. What I want to mention with our grocery deliveries, we found that we spent $10,000 so far this year in purchasing groceries, but thanks to all of our community partners, that yields $97,000 in worth of food to families. And so, it's all that. So, know that, you know, your donations are going to be really well-used, and thank you for allowing me to share that. So, jacobshart.org, and we're in Watsonville. You can just go on the website and find our online donations, or send a check, or, you know, send, if you have toilet papers, we need all of it, you know? So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Watkins.
Well, it's nice to see you, Lori, and I just, I would echo what was said already, and thank you, Councilmember Brown, for asking that question. That was also sort of what I was thinking, is how can we continue to help you? I know, I just appreciate you sharing what the community's been able to do to support these families on what I can't imagine as probably their darkest days, but also just having worked alongside you, Lori, for a number of years, I just want to show and express my deep appreciation for your tireless dedication to this cause, to kids, to families. It's inspiring, and we, as a community, all benefit from it, too. So, thank you so much for all you do.
And right back to you all, thank you so much, Martine, all of you, thank you so much for the work that you do for the community. I mean, this is, it's all a labor of love, and we all have our part to play in this extraordinary tapestry called Santa Cruz, you know?
Councilmember Byers?
Oh, thank you. Lori, I was on the council in 1999.
Oh, wow!
And I so remember your coming, and it was, I mean, I don't remember the details, but it was such a new organization, and look at it, it's just wonderful. I've been very proud to participate in that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and I do want to mention that back in 1999, Melissa McDill, I don't know many of you knew Missy, she was board president back then, when we were just like a few people and working out of my living room, and, you know, she just lost her battle to cancer last month, a little over a month ago. And it's been a big loss to our organization because she's been around that long. And I'd like to share that, at the same time we lost Missy, Granite Construction actually donated an additional 5,500 square feet to us here in, with our building already at 7,000 square feet free. And so, what we're doing now, which I would love the community to get involved in this, is we're preparing a place to come home to for our families when they can return to Jacob's Heart. We will now have over like 15,000 total square feet. And so, we're expanding our counseling program, and we want to expand that out to other organizations who are working with children, and because our children with cancer and their siblings intersect with so many different pieces of it, like to educators, to healers, to counselors, to, to come and, and let's welcome our community back together when we can. So, that all was right there timed, and when we lost Missy McDill. So, we're naming it the McDill Center for Creative Healing at Jacob's Heart. So, I really, we'll make announcements about that, but I'm glad you brought that up in 1999 because it was her, Missy and I, that were going around getting all those signatures. And the Harley guys, too, all those Harley-Davidson guys, you know? Love it. Yeah, that's a tapestry we are, of Santa Cruz County, right?
Absolutely. Well, thank you again, Lori, for all your hard work, dedication, and commitment to this, and we're really happy to be bringing this proclamation forward at this time.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. Thank you so much. For everything you do.
All right, so moving on, we have the next proclamations. We have up, we have four retirement proclamations honoring some of our police officers and public safety workers. The first one that we have is for Larry Emilio, declaring August 31st, 2020 as Larry Emilio Retirement Day. And so, I'll read a few lines from this proclamation. "Whereas on August 31st, 2020, police payroll and purchasing clerk Larry Emilio is retiring after 18 years of faithful and dedicated service to the City of Santa Cruz and its citizens. And whereas on September 4th, 2002, Larry Emilio was hired by the Santa Cruz Police Department as a temporary police records technician, and in February 2003, he was subsequently hired as a permanent employee. And whereas during Larry Emilio's tenure, he served in various roles, including police records technician, and most recently, police payroll and purchasing clerk. And whereas Larry Emilio has been an outstanding example of loyalty, has been a tremendous asset to the City of Santa Cruz, its community, and its police department, and will long be remembered and appreciated for both his friendship and for his 18 years of commendable service. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2020 as Larry Emilio Retirement Day in the City of Santa Cruz, and encourage all his coworkers and citizens to join me in expressing heartfelt appreciation for his 18 years of dedicated and exemplary service and numerous contributions to the Santa Cruz Police Department and the City of Santa Cruz, and wishing him well in his retirement." Our next retirement proclamation, and maybe at the end I can open up for council members if they want to say any words for police officers who are retiring. But the next proclamation is declaring September 4th, 2020 as Warren Berry Retirement Day. So, I'll again read a few of the "whereas's" to the proclamation. "Whereas on September 4th, 2020, Warren Berry is retiring after 30 years of faithful and dedicated service to the City of Santa Cruz and its citizens. Whereas on April 19th, 1990, Warren Berry was hired by the Santa Cruz Police Department as a reserve police officer. In November of 1990, he joined the investigations division as a community service aide. In March of 1993, he joined the patrol division as a community service officer, and in December of 1993, he was sworn in as a police officer within the patrol division. Whereas in December of 2004, Warren Berry was promoted to sergeant in the patrol division and supervised the outset of the parks unit. In 2007, he moved into the administrative, administration division as sergeant, serving in that role until 2012, when he was promoted to lieutenant in patrol, and he remained a lieutenant in patrol until 2018, when he was assigned as lieutenant of investigations and is presently serving in that capacity. Whereas Warren Berry has received numerous commendations, including two chiefs commendations, one outstanding police duty award, and a county criminal justice award, and auto-theft recovery award. And whereas Warren Berry is a graduate of Sherman Block Supervisor's Leadership Institute and FBI National Academy. And whereas Warren Berry has been an outstanding example of loyalty, has been a tremendous asset to the City of Santa Cruz, its community, and its police department, and will long be remembered and appreciated for both his friendship and for his 30 years of commendable service. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim September 4th, 2020 as Warren Berry Retirement Day in the City of Santa Cruz, and encourage all his coworkers and citizens to join me in expressing heartfelt appreciation for his 30 years of dedicated and exemplary service and numerous contributions to the Santa Cruz Police Department and the City of Santa Cruz, and wishing him well in his retirement." The next retirement proclamation we have is declaring September 4th, 2020 as Dan Flippo Retirement Day. So, "Whereas on September 4th, 2020, Dan Flippo is retiring after 29 years of faithful and dedicated service to the City of Santa Cruz and its citizens. Whereas on March 21st, 1991, Dan Flippo was hired by the Santa Cruz Police Department as a police reserve officer, and in August of 1991, he headed off to the police academy at Galvin College as a trainee. Four months later, he graduated from the police academy, and on December 30th, 1991, he was sworn in as a full-time police officer. Whereas Dan Flippo was assigned to the investigation division as a detective in 2000, was promoted to the rank of sergeant, where he remained from 2000 through 2011 in patrol, downtown patrol, traffic, and streets crimes. In 2012, he was promoted to lieutenant, where he stayed until 2016, when he was promoted to deputy chief of administrations. And earlier this year, he was assigned to deputy chief of operations, overseeing the entire patrol and operations division of the City of Santa Cruz Police Department. Whereas Dan Flippo has devoted the majority of his career to training others, he's been recognized as a use-of-force expert, who has given back to the law enforcement community by teaching others to use sound tactics and develop critical decision-making skills. Whereas one of Dan's proudest accomplishments was being one of the developers and founding members of the Santa Cruz Police Department's Emergency Services Unit Tactical Team, of which he was an active member for over 12 years. Whereas Dan Flippo is also honored to have mentored and helped develop others who've gone on to promote to higher ranks within the Santa Cruz Police Department, and has been recognized as a running, as running an efficient department and division. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim September 4th, 2020 as Dan Flippo Retirement Day in the City of Santa Cruz, and encourage all his coworkers and citizens to join me in expressing heartfelt appreciation for his 29 years of dedicated and exemplary service and numerous contributions to the Santa Cruz Police Department and the City of Santa Cruz, and wishing him well in his retirement." And our last retirement proclamation is proclaiming September 10th, 2020 as Marilyn Berry Retirement Day. "Whereas on September 10th, 2020, police records technician Marilyn Berry is retiring after 29 years of faithful and dedicated service to the City of Santa Cruz and its citizens. And whereas on March 16th, 1991, Marilyn Berry was hired by the Santa Cruz Police Department as a police radio dispatcher. In June of that year, she was hired as a crossing guard and served in that role for two years. Whereas in September of 2000, Marilyn Berry made her way as a community service aide before becoming a police records technician in January of 2002 for the Santa Cruz Police Department's Records Division, a role that she has served in for 18 years and will proudly retire from. Whereas Marilyn Berry has been an outstanding example of loyalty, has been tremendous, a tremendous asset to the City of Santa Cruz, its community, and its police department, and will long be remembered and appreciated for both her friendship and for her 29 years of commendable service. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim September 10th, 2020 as Marilyn Berry Retirement Day in the City of Santa Cruz, encourage all her coworkers and citizens to join me in expressing heartfelt appreciation for her 29 years of dedicated and exemplary service and numerous contributions to the Santa Cruz Police Department and the City of Santa Cruz, and wishing her well in her retirement." As Mayor, I would just like to say thank you so much for all these officers who have dedicated so much time and so much of their lives to serving the City of Santa Cruz. I know that it's oftentimes difficult to find good officers to join our department, let alone those who will stay for 20 to 30 years. And so, I just want to thank those officers who are going into their retirement, and want to wish you all well. And I'd like to invite any of our council members to speak, should they be interested in doing so. Councilmember Watkins, and Councilmember Golda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just echo your comments of appreciation for their years of dedicated service to our city, and also just how challenging these circumstances are, because having served as mayor, being able to actually go and celebrate and have these moments of appreciation in person, you know, it's hard, you just can't replace that. So, you know, in a virtual way, I hope we, as a community, can celebrate their years of service, and thank you for sharing those proclamations.
Councilmember Golda.
I was going to echo what Councilmember Watkins said, and also, and that it's probably not the way you pictured retiring after all of your years of dedication and service to the city, but it didn't go unnoticed, all your hard work, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us over the years, and we hope you have a long and happy years of travel and fun things ahead, and as soon as we're out of COVID, and look forward to seeing you enjoying the beach and doing other fun things.
Vice Mayor Myers.
Yeah, I just wanted to also echo my appreciation. It's quite a day for our police department to lose so much decades of experience, and for people who have really dedicated their lives to serving the people of Santa Cruz. And I just wish you and your families all the best, and hope you enjoy everything you plan to do in retirement, and I wish we could be having a big celebration right now, but please just know that we appreciate everything you've done and all the time you've given to our community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Well, I didn't do the math as we were reading the proclamations, but it's well over a century's service, I think, between these four people. And interestingly enough, two of them, what we would say, kind of behind the scenes, doing the nothing but work of the police department, and two very visible people who have risen over time to become elite within the department. And I realized as we were reading those that their tenure in the department can overlap with mine, the city, and it's really, it's wonderful to see people who are so dedicated and do a call to this work, who have such a sense of professionalism and very real connection to community dedicate that career to our city, and it certainly has shown the quality of their work, and also the appreciation that I think is widely held in the community for all the work they've done. And I echo whoever said, you know, one of the things about retirement to me, age of COVID, is, boy, you miss those retirement parties, where you can get together in person and thank people for their work. But really, thank you so much to all these people.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to say thank you for your service to all those who are retiring now in these very strange times. And, you know, I know that when Deputy Chief Martinez retired, he was able to come to the council meeting and talk with us and address us, and that, it was really great to hear from him. We don't always hear directly from folks over in PD. And so, while we are not getting a chance to hear from you here today, I just wanted to thank you all for your service. And it's, I actually did the math, Cynthia, and it was 106 years total here that we've got. to the council meeting and, and talk with us and address us, and that, it was really great to hear from him. We don't always hear directly from folks over in PD. And so while we are not getting a chance to hear from you here today, I just wanted to thank you all for your service. And it's, I, I actually did the math, Cynthia, and it was 106 years total here that we've got, and, you know, and, and well-deserved retirement.
Well, for all those officers, again, thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job, but you all stuck it out for the long haul with this community, and we very much appreciate your time and service. And so with that, we have one more proclamation to give today. I'm going to invite Denise Elrich to accept this proclamation declaring September, oops, no, not September 10th, declaring August 31st as overdose, overdose awareness day. And so I'll read some of the wherashes for this. Whereas the City of Santa Cruz does affirm and acknowledge that harm, the harm that results from drug overdose. Whereas the City of Santa Cruz supports the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day, of both remembering loved ones lost overdose and enhancing empathy for people that are impacted by substance abuse. Whereas we resolve to commit to reducing the toll of overdose in our community. In 2019, accidental drug overdose claimed the lives of 57 people in Santa Cruz County, with countless more people affected forever. Whereas we affirm that people affected by overdose are sons, daughters, mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, coworkers, neighbors, and friends deserving of our love, compassion, and support. Whereas we will do all we can to increase empathy and decrease stigma. Whereas we resolve to support evidence-based strategies as outlined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention that include targeted naloxone distribution, medicated assisted treatment, 911 Good Samaritan laws, naloxone distribution in treatment settings and in criminal justice settings, medication-assisted treatment in criminal, in criminal justice settings, and upon release, initiating medical assistance treatment in emergency departments, and supporting syringe services programs. Now therefore, I, Justin Cummings, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2020, as overdose awareness day in the City of Santa Cruz, and ask all residents to work together to help end negative stigmas associated with addiction and support programs that help members of our community overcome addiction. And I'd like to invite Denise Elrich to say a few words on behalf of the Harm Reduction Coalition of Santa Cruz County.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great. Thank you very, very much, Mayor Cummings and councilmembers. And I'm speaking to you today as the founder of the Harm Reduction Coalition of Santa Cruz County, but I also, with Mayor, with former Mayor Watkins, we have served together on community prevention partners who are also play a role in International Overdose Awareness Day, as well as, I'm a member of the SafeRx Coalition for Santa Cruz County, who's been working for years to decrease opioid prescribing practices, among other things. And every year, we host an event on August 31st together, and typically they're in the park, and we make prayer flags, like you see behind me that we hang at the Siren Services Program now. We gather with people that have lost a cousin or a family member, but this year, we had to do it over Zoom, which had its negative impacts, but it also had some positive impacts in that we gathered over 100 people. Some family members from as far as Texas, from San Diego, were able to dial in. We hosted a lovely event with Gail Newell and Melissa Etheridge as our guest speakers, who you both know have lost a son to preventable overdose. And I really want to thank you, Mayor Cummings and Councilmember Brown, also especially for your courageous support of us, the Harm Reduction Coalition of Santa Cruz County, in effort to return syringe access and disposal to what it once was, which was evidence-based and far-reaching and peer-supported. I also want to thank you, Mayor Cummings in particular, for signing on to a recent op-ed that was published in the Poggeronian with other mayors, Kristen Peterson in Capitola and Rebecca Garcia in Watsonville. And the subject of the op-ed was really to address stigma and empathy for people that live with substance use disorder. And the title of the op-ed was Words Matter. And I, I just want to read a small segment of that, and then I will move on. I did have to put things in writing to protect you all from me rambling on or from me getting tongue-tied, so excuse me if I read. But here's, here's a quote from the op-ed. There has been attention and commentary in both the media and social groups in Santa Cruz County regarding words to describe those who suffer from substance use disorders in less than favorable terms. Words such as junkie, drug seeker, criminal-like, addict, all add to the stigma associated with substance use. Addiction is a diagnosis characterized by compulsive drug use despite negative consequences. The people, as you said, who use drugs are our neighbors, fathers, mothers, children, and in essence, they are your constituents. As difficult as it is to live with a chronic potentially relapsing disease, the impacts of stigma can be devastating. Public stigma leads to barriers in, of employment, education, training, health, housing, and social support. And personal stigma leads to shame and guilt, lowered self-esteem, and what's very important, it leads to delays in seeking help and poorer health outcomes. Stigma involves many labels, negative stereotypes, and dehumanization that impact social and health outcomes. We strongly urge and implore the community to move to a model of person-first language to humanize people rather than stigmatizing languages that have severe negative outcomes. I'm very thankful that the City of Santa Cruz has moved forward and has adopted a health and all policy framework, and adopting first-person language is very much aligned with this policy. I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my harm-reductionist heart for your proclamation of support, and I can assure you that the Harm Reduction Coalition, as well as SafeRx and community prevention partners, will gladly work together with the City of Santa Cruz. COVID-19, plus the recent fire disasters, combined with an opioid-use epidemic that has reduced the life expectancy of a generation nationally, has undoubtedly had negative impacts on the overdose risk in the City of Santa Cruz. And I will resend last year's report to you on the Sheriff Coroner's update of the 2008 to 18 overdose data. It's very useful, and suffice to say that the city that you serve has the highest rate of fatal overdoses anywhere in the county. And that's been consistent for numerous years. And the question that I would like the council to be asking themselves is, can, as you support a health and all policies framework, how can we reduce preventable overdose deaths? Is all of the recommendations that you mentioned that are recommended by the CDC, it's no one magic bullet, it's going to be a collaborative effort. I only wish Jen Hastings was here with me because without their steadfast, rock-solid, door-knocking, pavement-pounding work, we wouldn't have medication-assisted treatment in the jails, the Edie Bridge that she's instrumental, that they are instrumental on. So I will let you know that next week, on September 15th, the Integrated Behavioral Health and Action Coalition will meet, and there will be a meeting with the 2019 overdose trends and data, and our speakers at that meeting will be Jen Hastings, Dr. Stephanie Fiore, Gail Newell, and Dr. Gillarducci. I will forward you a link to that event in case you need one more Zoom meeting to attend, but that's always a powerful contemplative meeting, and it'll also have kind of a projection for 2020 because we are in this strange time, and nationally, we already know that 35 states are reporting surges in fatal overdose deaths. So on that note, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for acknowledging this real issue that we face as a community, and that is overdose. And we can reduce overdose, we can eliminate fatal overdoses. It's not going to be easy, but it's a heavy lift, but it's worth it. It's really worth it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. I don't know if there's any, anything that, any comments from councilmembers, Councilwoman Brown?
Yeah, I'll just really quickly say thank you, Denise, for joining us and talking about this issue. Thank you for all the work you do, and I just want to give a really sincere thanks to the, the folks who work with the Harm Reduction Coalition in Santa Cruz County. I, I know many of you as friends, neighbors, and, and I just know how much you care about people and about our community and, and really doing the right thing to help alleviate suffering, really, and, and the pain that comes with addiction. So just wanted to say that and keep on doing the good work. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Denise, and I think it's really important to, to bring up awareness and, and also really highlighting what you shared, which is the work of the Community Prevention Partnership, and how are we also working to ensure that our kids are provided with the best opportunities to thrive and not to actually go down a path of addiction ideally. And so how do we even think about things more even upstream and preventing drug use from the very beginning? And I think it's the holistic bits that Lori mentioned earlier in terms of how we can work together to improve the health of our entire community. So, thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor.
All right. Seeing no further comments, Denise, thank you again for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for all the work that you all are doing to try to prevent overdose deaths in, in our city and throughout our county. I think it's really important that we try to, you know, continue getting people on a pathway of recovery and changing the way that we refer to people and making them feel like they can get services when it's needed is one of, is a very big step in that direction. So, and also, I think prevention is, is key to all of this as well. So, thank you for all the work that you all do, and with that, we'll, we'll continue on with our meeting. So, I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting, again, is being broadcast on community television, Channel 25, and streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. If you wish to comment on an agenda item today, instructions are provided on your screen. We will provide these instructions throughout the meeting whenever we move on to an agenda item that will be opened up for public comment. Please note that public comment is only heard on items that council's taking action on and not regular updates and reports. Items that will be opened up for public comment during today's meetings are items numbers 12 through 26 on our agenda. I'd like to ask if there's any disqualifications or statements of disqualification today. Hearing none, I'd like to ask the clerk to announce any additions or deletions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the recommendation of the city attorney with concurrence from the director of Parks and Recreation, Tony Elliott, item number 25, which is the Parks Master Plan 2030 and Environmental Impact Report, is deleted from the agenda.
So, pardon, pardon the interruption, Mayor, but I would just like to clarify that it will be continued to the meeting of October 13th, and in the meantime, will be referred back to the Parks and Recreation Commission for further discussion at its September 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for that deletion and for that information. Next on our agenda, oral communications, just have to make an announcement on that, just like to make an announcement on that. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to some items that are not on our agenda. Oral communications will occur immediately after agenda item number 26. So if you wish to make a comment during oral communications, please call in towards the end of item number 26. Next item on our agenda is city attorney report on closed session. I'd like to call on the city attorney to provide a report on the closed session items from today.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cummings, members of the city council. This afternoon, the council had some closed at 12:00 PM to discuss liability claims and pending litigation matters only. Item one was liability claims, the claims of Ruben Farnsworth, Progressive Insurance, and Deborah Workman. The first of those, the first two of those, the Ruben Farnsworth claim and the Progressive Insurance claim are also listed on your consent calendar this afternoon as item number 15. There was no reportable action on the third claim of Deborah Workman. Next, the council considered pending litigation matters. Item 2A was the case National Urban League, et cetera, versus Wilbur J. Ross et al., a case pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of California. In that case, the council, by unanimous vote, authorized the city to join in an amicus brief that is being filed by the County of Santa Clara in this lawsuit, which challenges a decision by the Department of Commerce and the Census Bureau to cut short a bureau non-response follow-up efforts. These are efforts that the Census Bureau typically does when it has canvassed an area and identified individuals or households that have not responded to the census. The, the non-response follow-up efforts this census year were delayed because of the COVID-19 crisis, and earlier in the year, the Trump administration and the Census Bureau announced that they would be, in light of the, the suspension of those efforts, would be extending the deadline for non-response follow-up efforts to the end of October. And then just recently, the Census Bureau announced that it would, that it had rescinded that extension and was going back to the current deadline, or the initial deadline, which was September 30th. I might add that last Friday, in the U.S. District Court in San Jose, Judge Lisa Coe granted a temporary restraining order against the Census Bureau's operational changes, and a further hearing on a preliminary injunction in that matter is, is currently scheduled for September 17th, at which time the plaintiffs will be requesting a preliminary injunction to, again, extend the deadline for the cutoff of the non-response follow-up efforts to the, to the census process. Item 2B is a trio of cases entitled Commonwealth of Pennsylvania et al. versus Louis DeJoy et al. That's a case pending in the Eastern District Court of Pennsylvania, United States District Court in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. Second case is entitled The State of New York versus Donald J. Trump, and that is a case pending in the District of Columbia, United States District Court. The third case is entitled The State of Washington versus Donald J. Trump, and that is a case that's pending in the Eastern District of Washington in the United States District Court. And, and again, the council unanimously authorized the city to join in an amicus brief being filed on behalf of the County of Santa Clara and the Public Rights Project, which is representing the City of Columbus, Ohio. This lawsuit challenges operational changes at the U.S. Postal Service that have already delayed mail delivery and that appear to be part of a Trump administration attempt to suppress voting-by-mail ballot, which during the pandemic has increased by over 400% compared to prior presidential primary elections. And these measures include eliminating overtime, eliminating trips to postal sorting facilities to pick up mail for delivery, the notorious removing mail sorting machines from certain localities, and prioritizing election ballots from the first-class mail process, all of which appear to be intended to voter turnout and mail ballot voting in the upcoming presidential election. So again, the council unanimously authorized the city to join in an amicus brief being prepared in those three matters, and there was no further reportable action.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the city manager report. I'd like to call on the city manager to provide updates on city events and business items.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of updates first as it relates to the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, and then some updates on the CU lightning complex fires. So first, with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic response, the governor did announce today, you may have heard- you may have heard, that Santa Cruz County has now been moved to the red tier, which loosens some economic restrictions. So, beginning today, personnel care services, such as waxing nails and massage, restaurants, places of worship, movie theaters, gyms, and fitness centers, along with museums, zoos, and aquariums, aquariums, will be open, will be able to open indoors with modifications to protect the health and safety of staff and the public. But I also wanted to point out that the Health Department has also warned that the community should be aware that another surge of COVID-19 cases is anticipated. Nonetheless, this is due to evacuations from the fire, which resulted in many people mixing with others from outside and inside their households. So if the case count does go up, Santa Cruz County could return to the purple tier in 14 days. So we'll have to see how long we can stay in the red tier. School openings for in-person instruction can only be considered once a county has been in the red tier for 14 days and are subject to decisions by local school boards and administrators. So at this point, no county schools may open for in-person instruction at this time. So that's the situation with respect to the schools. The other thing that occurred this weekend were the beach closures, and I could tell you that our preliminary information that I've received thus far is that they were pretty quiet this weekend. We didn't really have any major incidences or large crowds. So that's good from the perspective of preventing the virus spread. That probably was attributable to the dual county, Santa Cruz and Monterey County, closure of beaches, as well as state parks, beaches. And also, I imagine the fires probably played a role with respect to reducing crowds. So with respect to that front, I think we did pretty well, didn't have any major problems that we can report at this time. So that's the pandemic updates. Now, with respect to the fires, I'm just going to point out a couple of fire response activities, and then I'm going to turn it over to Jason Hyduk, our fire chief, who can give an update on the overall fire. And then Rosemary may want to comment also on the water system-related issues. So a couple of activities, fire response activities, that are happening in the city. First, as you all know, the county did open a resource recovery center or recovery resource center in the city at the arena. That was opened on August 29th, and it's open from 11:00 to 7:00 PM. And that is a way for residents that are impacted by the fire to connect to resources and services so they can help to recover and rebuild. That's operating right now. And then with respect to shelter sites, the county did consolidate shelter facilities, which included reducing or closing some facilities as the number of evacuees declined with reopenings of communities. And so the Civic Auditorium Evacuation Center was closed, along with some others in the county. However, sites do remain open, and those include the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds in Watsonville, the Seventh Day Adventist Conference Grounds in SoCal, Cabrillo College in Aptos, Harbor High School here in Santa Cruz, and the Simpkins Family Swim Center in Live Oak. So those are still available for evacuees. And so now I'll turn it over to Jason and then Rosemary after that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cummings and City Council, Jason Hyduk, your fire chief. So, brief update on the CZU fire. The good news is, as of this morning, it's 81% contained, and it's just over 86,000 acres in total. That containment number will go up, and primarily those lines of containment are in the Boulder Creek and the Pescadero-Gutano area. It's incredibly steep terrain, and they've really been aggressive about repopulating those areas when the infrastructure can't support it. At this point, the number of people who are assigned to the incident is decreasing. I'm sure you're aware that the state as a whole has a number of very large-scale fire incidents that are occurring right now. Unfortunately, this fire did have one fatality associated with it. But I will say that, given the scope of this fire and the area that it was in, being able to evacuate that number of people that quickly and not having more significant entries or fatalities is an absolute success. There's just under 1,500 structures that have been destroyed. The majority of those are in the County of Santa Cruz, and they are in the process of assessing all of those areas. The recovery from this is going to be a very long, ongoing process, and primarily not just rebuilding of homes and getting people back into their structures, but the infrastructure. There's really significant damage to power lines, to the water systems, and that's one of the things that's holding up the repopulation of these areas so that people have a place to go back to that's safe. But also, traveling on those roads, they're narrow two-lane roads, and there's a lot of heavy equipment as those people are back in there doing that infrastructure. I expect that they'll have full containment on this shortly, but one word, I do want to, that containment is just contained. There's a number of interior pockets or vegetation that will smoke and be on fire until we get significant rain, and that's going to be an ongoing issue for all the people in that area as they go back. So the good news is we, they have good containment on this fire. Expect they'll have full containment here in the near future. The bad news is, is it's going to be a long road to a full recovery for all the people that have been impacted here within our county.
Thanks, Jason. Go ahead. Let's turn.
So I'd like to share my screen. Are you seeing my screen? Yes, no? No, hold on a second, sorry.
That was Mary. I know you have it saved, so if you want me to share mine, let me know.
Bonnie, maybe you could do that for me on the M drive. Sorry, I don't know what's going on with this today. A couple of things, I've got a number of slides here, and I intend to go fairly quickly, but we have been getting some requests and some concerns expressed by the, by members of the community about water quality in particular. But I would really like to talk a couple of minutes about, yeah, that's not it. It's the other one, I think, Bonnie. I would really like to talk about the issues associated with the work that's been being done by the WRT team. There we go. The Water Resources, the Watershed Emergency Response Team. And to talk a little bit about kind of where we've been and where we're going. So maybe we could back up a couple of slides here. Are we on some kind of?
Hold on a second.
So where we've been fundamentally is, we did quite a bit of work in, right before the meeting that we had two weeks ago, to get our facilities ready. And I have a couple of photos that show a big fire break on the west side of the ridge associated with the Lockloman, the Mill Creek Watershed. And as a result of making those fire breaks, not going to work today.
Hold on a second.
Yeah. Okay, next slide, please. There we go. This is a fire break that was put in on the west side of the Mill Creek Watershed, and now we need to go in and put in water bars so that during the rainy season, we don't have basic more flooding and erosion of these areas. So this is a sort of hardening. The same is true for, particularly for the next slide, Bonnie, the Grand Hill Water Treatment Plant. Quite a bit of vegetation management was done there, removal. And now we've got, particularly on the steep slopes, downhill side of this, we've got to put in some drainage structures to make sure we don't lose the hillside during the upcoming rain. Go ahead. But really, among the main things that I want to be talking about here are the fact that high water quality continues to be an ongoing focus. And I don't expect anybody to, go ahead to the next slide, to be able to read all the detail here, but this is an example of the kind of work that we're doing in terms of the water quality monitoring, the parameters that are being tested. There's another slide beyond this that shows even more areas that we're doing ongoing monitoring. For some of the big examples of concern are benzene, which is associated with the melted HBT, HDPE pipe up in the upper part of the watershed in the Boulder Creek Water System. But fundamentally, we are doing even more monitoring than we would normally do, and you can see pretty much any kind of parameter on this, from the organic chemicals to the inorganic chemicals, metals, and to biologicals that we are focusing on. And so we will continue to be using that information, collecting even more than usual, and using it and making decisions about how we operate the water system. Go ahead, Bonnie. The big issue, and I think Jason maybe sort of, next one after that, that Jason sort of mentioned this, is, can you click on this link for me, please? It's the debris flows and source of contamination coming into the system. If it works, we should be able to see a small clip from the USGS that, it's not going to work? I don't see the little thing going around. The USGS has a really interesting little clip of a, an area in Orange County that burned a couple of years ago, that they put a rain intensity camera on. And so once you see that within three minutes, the stream starts to flow full of debris and runoff from the area that is affected by the rainfall. Go ahead, Bonnie, we'll just skip that. So this is what a normal situation would look like. The rain would infiltrate into the ground and run subsurface into the stream beds, but under the post-fire conditions, go ahead, post-fire conditions, it's not what happens. The fire makes the soil impervious to infiltration, and so you end up getting quite a bit of debris that comes into the system and then washes downstream. And, go ahead, Bonnie. This is what we're really concerned about coming forward. In the San Lorenzo River, we have that issue there. We know we have burn area in the Laguna Watershed. Majors and Lydell seem not to be affected at this point, but we are concerned about what will happen once the rain comes. One more, please. Again, this is a map I showed you the last time that kind of showed the perimeter of the fire in the kind of late August and the portion of the fire area that is in the San Lorenzo Watershed, the source of about 45% of our total supply. Go ahead. And the, this is an area between Majors and Laguna, just above the Laguna diversion. So this is the kind of prime area. We don't have a lot of photos of these areas yet because we've not been able to get access, but this is the prime area where we're concerned about debris flows and sedimentation and sediment transport, water quality impacts. Go ahead. So the WRT team that came in and started working, it really does look at free flow, flooding, rockfall, values at risk. Go ahead. And they assess the soil burn severity. They develop a lot of different kinds of maps and some really interesting products that are being developed. And Mayor Cummings also sent us a product that he and the folks up in UCSC that he works in, is looking at the fire intensities. And these are all tools that really will help us both target restoration work, but also be prepared for what might be coming as far as debris flows and other kind of issues in the future. Go ahead, Bonnie. This is a map from the Napa-Sonoma area and a fire that occurred a number of years ago that shows the burn severity. And you can kind of see the orangey colors, of which there's a little bit up here in the top of the photo of the map, as the most severely impacted. But even so, you get other kinds of problems associated with these, these things that you'll see in the next couple of slides. So go ahead, please. This is a similar map looking at the before and after. I think this is sediment transport, surface erosion in a tons per acre. And in the pre-fire, which is the image on the left-hand side, you can see that the average is about a quarter of a ton per acre with the pre-fire. Post-fire, you will see that it's 12 tons per acre with a 50% or greater probability that this would happen in any given year. So this is a pretty significant issue if it starts to really occur in, particularly in the San Lorenzo Watershed as a result of the burns that have occurred on the west side of that basin. Go ahead. And this is an example of the kind of rainfall intensity. This is in inches per hour against the kind of flows that you could see. And it's pretty common for us to see rainfall events that take the flows in the San Lorenzo from 100 DFS, which is the scale over here on the vertical axis, to, you know, six or eight or even 1,000, 2,000, 20,000. And if we get these kinds of rain events this winter, and we do have severe burn areas, we're going to have more significant flows, and we're going to have more runoff changes from the burn areas that are going to affect our water quality. And so that's a big concern for us. Go ahead, Bonnie. These are the maps I wanted to mention to you that Mayor Cummings and his folks that he works with at UCSC provided us with. It's with some really good imaging from satellite views about the burn areas. You can see in the image on the right-hand side, the high burn areas are mostly in the, on the west-side watersheds, which are a concern to us relative to Majors and to Lydell and to Laguna sources of supply, whereas some of the lower-intensity burns are more in the San Lorenzo Basin. And you'll kind of imagine that kind of where the, this green block in the, in this map on the, in this image on the right-hand sort of separates the upper part of the basin, that it's probably not so much affecting us versus the San Lorenzo Basin. So we've been pretty lucky in the sense that not so much of the area has had the really, really intense burns that we saw on the west-side watersheds. So that's a, that's a good sign for us, but still something to be cautious about. Go ahead, Bonnie. So the work, the work effort that's been underway, maybe actually just getting completed, will help us to identify mitigation efforts and restoration efforts and help us to focus those efforts in a very timely way so that we can use the next couple of months before we really hit the more likely portion of the rainy season, get some steps in place to help mitigate some of those impacts coming. Go ahead. And I used a number of the slides from, in this presentation from, they were from a presentation by Bruco to a meeting up at the Sonoma watershed area. So I wanted to acknowledge that work. And with that, I can take your questions if you have any.
Thank you all for those presentations. Do any councilmembers have questions for Rosemary or for Chief Hyduk or the City Manager?
I should, I should say one more thing, and that is that there's, you know, there's a lot of effort that's going on right now to find funding to make sure that we have the money to do the restoration that we need to do. And so I know that we and others are coordinating to work with folks in Sacramento and with FEMA to make sure that the restoration, the money that we need will be forthcoming and that it won't all necessarily have to come out of our local coffers.
Thanks, Rosemary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Kind of related to the question that was in my mind, is this just blew your budget and your work program completely to pieces if you didn't have enough going on?
Yeah.
Any comment on that?
I mean, I think the one thing that, the one thing I think for us is, we do have an emergency fund, a reserve that we can draw on, and particularly if it's a timing issue for getting some things done and then maybe getting reimbursement down the road, which I think is often the FEMA strategy, right? And we're working really hard to collect our information. We've got staff who've been pulling together a 20-some-page document to come up with recommendations both on restoration, on source monitoring, and how to make sure that we get early warning in the event that there's a problem coming our way. One of the big issues with a lot of debris flows is that our intake at the Tate Street, you know, the Coast Pump Station there on Tate Street could be blocked. And so thinking about contingency plans and also thinking- And so thinking about contingency plans, and also thinking about ways to manage water quality and to produce and deliver, you know, a quality product when there is a source water change. And so the treatment side of it is being looked at as well. We've got a lot of people putting our intention on that, but the goal is really a, you know, a focus in the next 60 to 75 days on those issues, and we'll sort of have to work other things around it. But yeah.
Rosemary, I had a quick question, just kind of on the restoration side, because I know oftentimes, you know, restoration, like ecological restoration in these areas can take, you know, a long time. And so I was just kind of curious what, if there are any types of kind of mitigation efforts that can be put in place to kind of slow the flow of a lot of that sediment? And, yeah, just kind of curious.
The work team has some. They have a lot of experience with those kinds of things. And I, in the presentation, I use every slide from that presentation, there were some examples of sort of temporary kind of dams kind of put up in places to, you know, create a little bit of a place for the water to slow down. Again, I think for us, the work teams report, and then, as I think I mentioned to you in a, you know, an email the other day, getting some visual sense of what is going on in the watershed areas that have been burned over is really helpful. And we're seeing in some of the aerials that we've seen so far, that there's kind of spots that are burned, and then other spots that aren't burned. And if that's the case, it's probably a slightly better situation than the alternative where everything is gone. They don't all look like that photo that I showed you from the Laguna area, so to speak. And so, you know, really getting a sense of where the big drainages come from. The west side of the San Lorenzo watershed tends to be, you know, more granitic soils, and so a little bit more stable, maybe less likely to have so much sloughing. But we have a lot to learn, and we're obviously focused on trying to gather information and process it, and make plans that can start getting put on the ground relatively quickly.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Myers.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I'm impressed that the work, work team is already out. And just some, from some experiences, you know, 10, 12 years ago in Big Sur, with some severe fire with really rugged terrain, I was really impressed, working with those folks, trying to manage a few properties through some of those issues, including properties that had domestic water systems on them. Just very impressed with the level of commitment and follow-up and knowledge that those teams bring. And, you know, there, we were able to avoid a number of what we thought would be really devastating debris flows, just by working with that team and really understanding the risk and how to manage the landscape. So I'm really glad to hear they're already on the ground, and especially right now before it gets too late in the season. So, and I know, Rosemary, you have really good watershed practitioners on your staff, some of the best. So will you, I guess my one question is, with all the efforts that we have been putting into the HCP, and knowing that fish flows is one of our major accomplishments over the last 10 years, really, but also going further into some of the restoration work that's gone on over the last few decades, how's your fisheries team feeling about sort of this pivotal time right now where we're going to, you know, we've been trying to enhance habitat, we've seen some good results, obviously in Laguna, but also up in the watershed? Do you, is your fisheries staff able to kind of get an assessment of how to manage through the winter quite yet?
Well, we're not quite there, but that certainly is on our mind. And Chief Haiduk reminded me that when the work team is finished, that the whole sort of report comes through the local agencies to, you know, coordinate implementation. And so we have already been in contact with the county regarding, you know, the water resources side of it, and their fisheries person along with ours, and the water resources management people along with our folks are certainly, you know, getting ready to dig into what those strategies need to be, and how to do the best we possibly can for, you know, those resources, all the resources we, that are values at risk in this situation.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it's, all of our, all of our water supply streams are all steelhead streams and Coho salmon, too. So you've got a, you've got a real balancing act of really trying to really protect those resources over the last decade. But now, now trying to understand how to manage those watersheds will be interesting. So, thanks. And please express to your staff, just a lot of appreciation for all the work they're doing right now. So thank you.
And thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Watkins.
Well, I'll just echo the appreciation of the work that's being done. And I know it's going to be a quick-moving process in terms of just how we can stay informed about what's happening, and if it just feeds updates during the city manager reports, that's really helpful, because I know a lot of people are thinking about this, especially as we're looking towards the winter months. But, you know, we still have a lot of fall dry weather ahead of us as well. I guess I have a quick question, maybe more for, kind of the length of impact of having a lot of the residents from the valleys in our communities. And I'm so grateful that we have the Kaiser Permanente Center open. What is the staffing and needs of that center, and how long do you anticipate it remaining open to serve those evacuees?
Thus far, the county is operating the facility. And so they're using a combination, I think, of volunteers, a variety of different organizations that are supporting and functioning in the facility, as well as county staff so far. So the city, they have some required city staff to participate in so far as operating the, the center, the assistance center. And then as far, I'm not, actually, I don't know exactly what their timeframe is, but I believe that there, it's, they haven't announced when it'll, it will close. And so I think they're, they're looking at just continuing to operate it as long as there's a need in assistance that's required. And it has been quite, used quite a bit, actually, just from observing the traffic and, and the people coming and coming to the facility, so it has been, has taken quite a bit of use, yes.
Great, well, thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions from council members on this item. I just want to thank the water director, the fire chief, all their staff for all the hard work that they're doing, our city manager's office, and everyone in the community who's really been stepping up under this really difficult time, during an already difficult time. So thank you all for the hard work that you're doing, and please let us know if there's anything we can do to help support you all. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the city council will review the meeting calendar. I'd like to call in the city clerk to provide any updates to the calendar.
There are no updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, is an opportunity for council members to report out on actions at external boards, committees, joint power authorities, in meetings that occurred since the last city council meeting, or rather the last, since the last update. So are there any council members who would like to start with updates? Councilmember Golda.
Hi. So I have an update from the county-wide integrated waste management task force. I attended on the third, and we discussed, and one of the things we discussed is the fire cleanup. And a lot of the cleanup was going to the Buena Vista landfill, landfill at that time. And they were also collecting waste from the evacuation centers and taking it there. And they were also taking it to centers in neighboring counties. And they wanted to let the public know that working, they're working with environmental health to ensure that the sites are not hazardous, and that the lots are ready to build before letting people rebuild on them. And then one thing I thought was interesting was that when talking about ash cleanup, because there is a lot of ash debris within the city, is that it can also be toxic, and so it's best to sweep it up as possible and not down the storm drain, because it, you know, if you can sweep it up, that's one thing. Or another thing is put it, push it into landscape and let it just kind of break down naturally there. And like Rosemary said, the water's safe within the city, but residents in some parts of our county are being advised not to currently drink their water until it's safe. And we also discussed food waste projects that are coming up, and plastic bag bans, and to-go food container things that are going to be postponed for now, but updated later. And that's it.
Okay, thanks. It looks like we have a public works director, Mark Peddle.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add something to Councilmember Golda's statement, and that's correct, to sweep it up. But if you can put it in a plastic bag and seal that bag and put it in your trash, so that, just don't dump it into your refuse can, because then when we dump it, it'll, it goes back in the air again. So we really want to try to contain that. So if people are going to, you can kind of wet it down and sweep it, it can easily be swept up, and then put it in a plastic bag and seal that up. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good job.
Okay. Vice Mayor Myers. Looks like you're muted also.
Just a quick update, we did have our city schools committee meeting last month, and this was a meeting just prior to the announcement by the governor that schools would not be going back in session. There continues to be the need for additional technologies that, for serving our, our kids, and also locations for distance learning. So, you know, thinking through places where potentially families and students and teachers could meet with regards to either teaching outside, or as it gets colder, figuring out some additional, some additional possibilities for people to gather for some in-person learning. Of course, that's all going to be changing. So most of those, most of those items have morphed back into really having schools working out of homes right now. But the other thing with city schools was just really, they're doing, our Parks and Rec Department is doing a great job working with them on all kinds of different things in terms of access to various facilities, and, you know, all the way to childcare and some other things. So just a really good partnership there. The homeless two-by-two committee, due to the fires, did not meet this month, and I believe we are trying to get rescheduled on that. And we had a long Metro, Metro meeting last week, or towards the end of the month, and just extensive work right now, trying to look at routes moving ahead, continue to have not a lot of, you know, smaller amounts of people on the buses, and really trying to figure out sort of the business plan moving forward, which had obviously a major ridership reduction. We have received and are currently using the recovery funds that were provided to transit districts throughout the country. But Metro will have to be doing quite a lot of business planning and financial planning moving ahead. A lot, we got an extensive report from our, from the executive officer regarding all the safety measures put in on the buses, including state-of-the-art methods to try to keep, keep people safe with, on the buses during their travels, and also looking at technologies with regards to not having to use money or cards or anything like that moving forward. So smartphone, smartphone technology and things like that. So very interesting update. We were on hiatus, obviously, in July, and learned a lot in terms of all the work of the, of the Metro over the last two months, at last month's board meeting. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who have updates? Councilmember Matthews. You're also muted.
In terms of Visit Santa Cruz County, we heard about the ongoing messaging of Visit Santa Cruz County from Don't Come to Public Safety messaging. They've tried to be very responsive, put a travel advisory right on the front of their website, basically saying, "Come later, when it's safe." And, and trying to really be good partners with all the emergency services. The spring campaign, obviously their budget has undergone a lot of things put on hold and restructuring. They have, in response to some diminished resources, laid off some staff, reorganized their staff a bit, they're down from 11 and 1/2 FTE to seven, and they're, they're rolling with the punches. Seeing the campaign, when it does here up in the future, will be the theme for Visit Santa Cruz County, Let's Cruise. The theme can be Let's Cruise Safely, just for visitors and for staff, in every respect, the emphasis is on safety. So they really are trying to reinforce that message. They've been putting up, as I think you know, a lot of evacuees, many of the properties giving special rates. They are also currently housing PD crews, emergency crews that have come in. So it's been quite a mixed bag of who they're serving at present. Another thing that's kind of interested, some of you may know the Visit Santa Cruz County for its revenue depends largely on a tourism marketing district. It's a self-assessment program. That, that's been in place for at least 10 years. And it's due to come up for, the current one expires in 2022. So they're just now beginning the process to examine the current assessment rate, the bits on the board, et cetera. So to do a good job of this and hit the timeline, it does take a couple of years to do the work, do the outreach to all the properties. There are over 100 properties in Santa Cruz County. So this is really kind of insider baseball, in a way, but it does need the majority of the properties to come on and agree and feel comfortable with it. It's worked well for them so far. So they have, they're in the process of appointing the task force to guide that TMD renewal process. And ultimately, that does have to be approved by the city council, when the, by all the jurisdictions. So that will come to the council at some point in the mid-future. I think that's the bulk of it. Yeah, I think that covers the bulk of it. Basically, they're, they're doing some major organizational changes, trying to stay on message for what serves the community needs, and keep their properties alive, and eventually supporting the city once again, when the time is right.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, so today really would be the day to give comprehensive reporting from the commissions and boards, since we have a light agenda. But I don't have a lot. I will say that the Regional Transportation Commission meeting, we approved a five-year plan for Measure D expenditures. And I guess the highlight from that would be that the revenue projections that we have been looking at, and everything's super fluid, obviously, but the projections, actually, the actuals were not down as far as we had anticipated. So that is going to be a big help for the, to not have to make cuts into some of the programming that has already been scheduled. There may be some kind of slowdown with sequencing and timing, but overall, we're managing to stay pretty well on track. And I think in the budget committee's meeting, you'll hear more from us at our next meeting on that.
Looking over this list, I think, I don't know if this is something in the budget process to look at, there's some committees that are kind of designated, they don't even have represented, or staffing. There's some committees that are kind of designated, they don't even have representatives or staffing. I don't know if this is an occasion with taking a hard look at all our work programs and our available energy, if we want to reexamine whether those are still priorities. So that's, that's just an observation. I'm pleased to say that the Code of Conduct Committee has done its work, and so you can take us off this list in the future. I don't know about the Downtown Library Subcommittee, if you consider your work done there, you would keep that available on hold. But, you know, I think just look at the list, see what makes sense in the current time that we're in.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think that that might be something worth considering when these items come forward. And so as it relates to the, the Code of Conduct, maybe that's a part of them. When we get to that item, we can talk about that in a little bit further detail today. The other council members?
I, I have a really brief update. I think the other committees I'm on were covered already, but just in regards to the farmer's market, they have been in touch with our Economic Development Department to do some lobbying around trying to get more family spending power in food dollars, like the pediatric EDP cards that were issued to support families. And so how are we, in terms of our communications with the state, advocating for more of those types of programs so that we're able to continue to serve those who are in need of fresh produce? And then, and then just also, not necessarily affecting the city directly, but they were displaced from their regular Scotts Valley location because of the staging that occurred for combating the fires. And so they have a new location in Scotts Valley that is, let's see, it's in, it's the Scotts Valley Square Shopping Center, and it's on a Saturday. So that's going to be a new location that they were able to find it there. So that's probably it for me.
Great, thanks. Just as an announcement, the Rental Data Committee didn't meet last month, but will be meeting on September 10th. And then for council members who are interested, and I know members of the public have been interested, I think that the next report on the library is supposed to be coming at our next meeting in September. So just so in case people are interested in when that report is coming back. And the expectation is that the conversations around contractors and we'll have a sense of, of who has applied through the city and kind of next steps based on that, or, or the development manager, I should say, if that's the appropriate term. So we should be getting an update at the next council meeting as it relates to the As for LAFCO, the commission approved the termination of inactive proposals in accordance with the commission's adopted policies. These are generally applications that have been inactive for over a year. And so that includes the City of Santa Cruz Sphere of Influence Amendment to include, there have been no action on that application since December of 2011 from the City of Santa Cruz. There have been no action on that application since plain extraterritorial water service. There have been no action or discussion on that item since March of 2016. We had not received any letters from any of those entities. And so those applications, based on previous conversations, there'll be actions taking place as it relates to the city providing water to upper campuses.
He wasn't able to dial in, and I just tried, and it didn't work. So I'm wondering if I should stop the meeting and restart it and have everyone else join in again.
Okay. Yeah, so why don't we try to see if we can fix this technical difficulty by having everyone, we're going to stop the meeting, and if you can all call in again, we'll try to get our meeting restarted again here in about two to three minutes.
I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember, yeah.
Does that mean if we, the council members have called in by phone and we're on the meeting, that we should also hang up and call in again?
I think that, yeah, yeah, I think we should all do that.
Okay.
All right. See everyone. Okay, if council members could, could turn the videos back on, we can go ahead and get started. It doesn't look like, oh, there we go. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. These are items numbers 12 through 23 on our agenda. Members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call in if you'd like to comment on item numbers 12 through 23. Instructions to call in should be on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device and press star nine to raise your hand, and listen for the queue saying that you've been unmuted. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by council members for further discussion. Are there any council members that would like to pull any items? I'm going to pull item number 16. Are there any council members who wish to just comment on any items on our consent agenda? Councilmember Watkins.
Thank you. I'd like to comment just on, on item 14 briefly.
Okay. Are there any other comments, Vice Mayor Myers?
Just a comment, quick comment on 13 and a quick comment on 18. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other council members with comments on items that are on our agenda? Hey Bonnie, I just realized too, is it possible for you to make me a host for the meeting? And then I also have a comment on item number 13 as well. Okay. There are any members of the public who would like to comment on our consent agenda items, with the exception of item number 16, now is the time to call in. Once you've called into the meeting, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. Once you've been acknowledged, you'll be asked to unmute, and you will be given two minutes to comment on the consent, the consent agenda.
I'm wondering if we want to reopen it also, maybe again, just because we didn't really give people a lot of time to call in, but.
Sure. Yeah, so if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on our consent agenda, these are items numbers 12 through 23 that are being heard at this time. Item number 16 has been pulled from the consent agenda, and if there are any members of the public who would like to, to speak to any of the items on our consent agenda, with the exception of item number 16, now is the time to call in. Once you've called in, you'll want to press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. While we're providing an opportunity for members of the public to call in, why don't we circle back to those council members who had comments? We can start with Councilmember Watkins.
I just wanted to just make a brief comment on item number 14. I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor for co-signing this item. I think it's really one way local jurisdictions can do our part to acknowledge past practices that have led to racism influencing a health outcome. And this is a step in the right direction through this acknowledgement, and I'm grateful to be able to co-sign, bring this forward as the City of Santa Cruz.
Yeah, thank you as well for bringing this to our attention. And also, I know a number of members of the public reached out to us regarding this, especially since the county has also made a similar declaration. So thank you again for, for asking us to sign on to this with you.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Myers. So open your call.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the mayor and our staff in the city manager's office for putting together the grand jury responses. I don't have any specific comments or questions. I just wanted to recognize the work done to date. And two of the reports really stood out to me, one being the De La Vega Golf Course Report. And I think what really stands out in that report is that, you know, when you don't take care of our city assets, when we're not able to actually put the funding into maintaining buildings and upgrading things and sort of deferring the kinds of, really the care that is necessary in a climate like ours, you know, our assets start to fall apart. And, you know, I think it's important as we go through another budget crisis that we continue to let our community know that many of the buildings the city owns are older, many of them are, you know, on a list of, long list of deferred maintenance activities. So I think this report points out both the struggle as a local agency to try to maintain all of our different assets that we do have, but also the importance to do that work to the extent possible along the way. And I do think that the golf course, I'm excited about some of the vision that our Parks Director has with regards to the golf course, not only for golfing, but also for frisbee golf and some of the other things that are ahead. So I think it's a, it's a good snapshot on, you know, an important facility, similar to our swimming pool, similar to a lot of these places that are very expensive to keep up, but they become more expensive when they're, when they're sort of at the end of life rather than along the way. So I appreciate the ability to just have that kind of daylighted via this process. And then I just wanted to also compliment, even though we were part of the communities listed in the, regarding the kind of best practices around budgeting and around risk management, I do believe that our decisions and of past decisions of councils before us have really placed us, especially with regards to the PRS obligation, in a, in a pretty solid place. And despite the emergency we're in now, at no fault of our own, we were keeping a pace and doing those best practices. So I just want to recognize our staff for really trying to manage that risk, trying to manage those obligations moving ahead for our community and for our city. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Myers, I know you had comments on number 18 as well. Did you want to make those comments?
That was just a very quick thank you to Commissioner Hamilton. She's going off of our downtown, downtown commission. Just a really involved person, always helpful in really understanding and forethinking improvements in our downtown, and just has been a longtime advisor in a commissioner role, and I just wanted to appreciate her service. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Watkins, I saw your hand was raised again. I just wanted to acknowledge you.
Yeah, thank you. I just had, I forgot to mention earlier, I just had a brief comment on item number 20, and that is the, the completion of the Safe Streets to School Crossing Program. And I know we all benefit from that, and I've seen the improvements go up in our neighborhood, and our kids and our community can get to school and go about the community in a much safer way as a result of that. And it's just a really testament to our, our public works and active transportation folks who are working on grants and getting the funding in and doing some pass-through for education to the nonprofits, and just wanted to acknowledge their work and appreciation for making our streets safer for our kids. So thanks. I forgot to mention it earlier.
Thank you for that comment. I just had a, oh, I just had a quick comment on item number 13, just because I know that there was some, that there are two reports that are not included there, and I just wanted to let folks know that we, we received feedback from council members on the fourth, and given that we wanted to ensure that we had adequate time to incorporate that feedback into the, the recommendations on the grand jury, these reports aren't due until after our next council meeting. And so we wanted to ensure that there's adequate time to provide that feedback and incorporate that into our, our answers. So those two reports, the one on council relationships and homelessness, those two reports will be coming back at the next council meeting in September. So just wanted to make sure folks were aware. So if there are no further questions or comments on items on our consent, with the exception of item number 16, we'll open it up to public comment. So if you'd like, if members of the public would like to comment on items on our consent agenda, with the exception of item number 16, please call the numbers that are on your screen. Once you've called in, please press, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will be given two minutes.
Hi, yes, this is Kara Phillips. On item 14, saying racism is a public health crisis does not make it so, but so-called protesting racism accompanied by violent looting, rioting, arson, murder, vandalism, assaulting the public and police, police protection defunding, destroying of businesses, and anarchists chanting death to America, as they have in the leftist home office in Oakland, is very much more so a public health crisis than a crisis of politic. Where is the declaration of that crisis? No really, where is it? This knee-jerk leftist progressive politic crisis declaration suffers as overblown, unjustified, and inflammatory. There are many causes of life outcomes, including shortcomings in ethnic culture, but primary responsibility for each life rests with the individual, not the state. There is plenty of opportunity in America and reg to riches as possible in one generation. Equal opportunity has existed for at least two generations, regardless of anecdotal evidence of declining examples of racism or not. A two-term black president, a black mayor, and otherwise all woman council should be proof enough opportunity exists like never before. Crisis is, it is not. This is a dangerous pandering endorsement of the disingenuous Marxist anarchists mob hidden agenda, which is a destabilizing threat to America. The riots in 48 of the 50 largest cities in America since March are a manifestation of evil. Intended or not, it's an endorsement of that evil. While I haven't examined your actual plans, as hinted at, to force your racial indoctrination theories onto city employees, I would warn against pushing the vile critical race theories, or simply put, the white man bad theories, which are devoid of any justified rational purpose except hate, or now, as we see, it can be a promotion of the Marxist anarchy movement also. You should note, Trump has issued an executive order banning such instruction of critical race theory at federal institutions, agencies, contractors, and urged the O M B to defund any that does. If such appears in any city employee training, I urge city employees to collect the materials or report the city to the president so that the city may have any federal grant money defunded or desist. There has never been a lower ratio of actual racism to the violent, hotter, blown about it than there is today. Okay, see my time is up? Bye.
If there's any other member of the public who'd like to speak to us on items on our consent agenda, with the exception of item number 16, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will have two minutes. Okay, seeing that there's no other member of the public who'd like to speak to items that are on our consent agenda, with the exception of item number 16, I'll bring it back to council, look for a motion to move the remaining consent agenda items. Councilmember Watkins.
I'll move the consent agenda with the exception of item 16.
Okay. Vice Mayor Myers. You're, you're muted.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Watkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Myers, to move the consent agenda with the exception of item number 16. I'd like to call in the clerk to please call the roll vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Mathias?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Goldar?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number 16. I, I pulled this item just because there was just one, a line in, in the, the policy that I just wanted to follow up on. And I'd like to actually thank the people who volunteered to be on this committee for their work to bring this forward. I think it's really going to help streamline, you know, instances when there may be disagreements or conflict between council members moving forward. And I think it'll be really helpful for us to be able to, you know, have a process where we can, you know, address complaints and comments in a meaningful way. So the one question I had, it's on page number four. I know that it seems like often there's a way if there's complaints. So the one question I had, it's on page number four. I know that it seems like often there's a way if there's complaints by council members, and if it includes the mayor, it would go to the vice mayor, and this is in the line in B1. And I just wanted to see if maybe a line could be added in, because I just wonder if there's ever an event where there's conflict between the mayor and the vice mayor, where one makes a complaint versus the other. Currently, the way that it's stated is if a complaint's made by a council member against the mayor, it would go to the vice mayor, but there's nothing in case there's a conflict between, if there's a complaint made on, the mayor makes one against the vice mayor, the vice mayor makes a complaint against the mayor. So I'm wondering if there can be, you know, whether it's the senior member of the council or if it's someone in the city manager's office, but I think that there needs to be something in there in case there's a complaint and conflict between the mayor and vice mayor.
Mayor Cummings, Lisa Murphy, you're Human Resources Director. I see what you're talking about in terms of how to mitigate between that two, and I think to keep it with the, within the, with the council, we would need to probably go add a line about the next most senior member. I think we could easily just drop a line in like that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I guess the other question I had too is when it's the next senior member, if that is just, if like defining that, whether that's years on council, or, because I just think about if someone has served, you know, and they take a break for 10 years and then they decide to serve again, and someone's, you know, more recently served, like which, like how we would define, you know, that seniority?
I think, that's a good question, and I think what you should probably consider doing is to have it be consecutive years on the council be the first one, and then the second tier would be something along the lines of most votes, if that was the conflict in between there. Something similar that you do is when you say vice mayor.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, I can add that in.
I guess, I guess we can, that's fine, that's fine by me. I think that if we can add that to the motion, it would just be helpful, you know, that if there's a conflict between the mayor and vice mayor, that the next senior member is, it's reported to the next senior member of council, and then seniority is based on consecutive years of service or most votes in the previous election.
And we can, we definitely can put that definition at it as another bullet.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Golda?
At some point, just wanted to ask Lisa to read us the language that will go in. This is, this is fine.
I should probably pull it up on the screen, to show my screen and actually edit it on screen, if that would be helpful. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Mayor Cummings, just a thumbs up if you can see that. Great, okay. So this would be the, oh, of course, I'm in PDF. I apologize. I'm in PDF, I'm not in Word. So I think though, in the, in the first section where it was the, line item two, upon report of a complaint, an ad hoc committee composed of the mayor, vice mayor, and the most senior uninvolved council member will convene as an evaluation committee to determine the ability of the complaint and, if appropriate, initial course of action. I think in the section here where it talks about, upon report of complaint, ad hoc composed of mayor, vice mayor, and the most senior uninvolved council member, so that by default, then Mayor Cummings, if the mayor or the vice mayor, if either one of them or both were involved, both of them would not be entitled to sit on the subcommittee, and we would then, I think by default, that refers to the fact that they couldn't, because they are involved, and then we'd have to pull up the next senior member. So we could actually leave it as is, if that, you think that might address it, or I'll continue to try to clarify?
I think that might. I was actually looking at the, the, in B1, if this does not resolve the matter, or if there's sufficient complexity or legal violation, then it shall be reported directly to the mayor. In the event that the mayor is the subject of the inquiry, the role of that official shall be the vice mayor. And then I was just thinking, another sentence, in the event that both the mayor and the vice mayor are the subject of inquiry, the role of that official shall be the most senior uninvolved council member.
I think you've captured it perfect. I'm not using them.
And then I guess there might be a good place to define most senior council member is defined as the council member with the most consecutive years of service, and in the event that there's a tie, the one who received the most votes in the previous election.
Yes, I think that's a perfect place to drop it in there, under, under one. It could be something in nature, you know, 1A. Councilmember Matthews, does that sound, I'm sorry, I'm unable to type that.
It's fine.
Okay. I didn't realize that was a PDF.
My own impression is this is trying to put into words how to make a dysfunctional family love each other. Yeah, I think, you know, we can only go so far into the details.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Myers?
I just, I just wanted to thank the committees for doing the work. I'm glad to see this coming forward. I want to thank Lisa for her work as well. It's just really important that we have a process where people can, can work through, you know, various issues, and just want to thank the committee and for the new Catherine and for Renee for joining the committee towards the end and basically getting over the finish line. So thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Okay.
When the time comes, I'll be prepared to make a motion, but you have to open it to the public first.
Yep, yeah. So I'll open up to the public. So if there are members of the public who'd like to speak to item number 15, or number 16, apologies, that was on our consent agenda, now is the time to call in. Once you've called into the meeting, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will be given two minutes to speak to us on this item.
So could I make a comment in the meantime, Mayor Cummings? I think, at the risk of further complicating the discussion, item B2, upon report of a complaint, a committee composed of the mayor, the vice ma, and the most uninvolved council member, et cetera, et cetera, but if the subject of the complaint involves the mayor and vice ma, an entity established, the council member with the most consecutive years, et cetera.
You, you, you cut out multiple times, I didn't hear any of what you said, but if the city clerk captured it, I'm, that, that's, that's perfect.
No, he cut out for me too.
Oh, sorry. I was saying that if we modify subsection B1 to specify that when the subject of the inquiry involves both the mayor and the vice mayor, then that matter shall be reported to the council member with the most consecutive years of service, or if there are more than one council member with most consecutive years of service, then the council member who received the highest number of votes at that, at their election. And then subparagraph two should be revised to specify that if the subject of the inquiry involves both the mayor and vice mayor, then an ad hoc committee will be convened by the council member with the most consecutive years of service, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so if there are any members of the public, if you'd like to speak to item number 16 on our consent agenda, now is the time to call in. Once you've called in, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you'll be given two minutes. Okay, seeing that there are no members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item, I'll bring it back to council for action and deliberation. Councilmember Matthews?
I will go ahead and move adoption of the code of ethics and conduct policy as amended during this discussion, and appreciation to the council members and staff who participated in this, and then I'd like to make a couple comments.
Okay. So motion by Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I'll second that with thanks to the council members who participated in the process and, and staff as well.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Matthews, seconded by Councilmember Brown, to move item number 16 with the additional amended language. Councilmember Matthews, you had some comments?
Yeah, I do want to point out that there were actually a total of five council members who participated in this over time, and in all the meetings, there were really thoughtful comments made, and I do want to thank Lisa for rolling us a bunches and keeping us on track. This, the absence of such a policy and the value of having it on record became evident to us in recent history, and this kind of code of ethics and conduct policy is pretty common in municipalities. The one that we presented here is based on a template with variations and updates appropriate to our community, but this reflects what many, 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 many other cities in California and the country are doing. So we are not inventing the wheel here, but it seems to reflect a general feeling of what's the most productive way to conduct ourselves, both with, among ourselves and our staff and the general public. So aside from that, I think the other thing that was pointed out to us that's important is to make sure that new council members and commissioners are informed of this very early on, just so we kind of know the assumptions going into that, and hopefully it needs to be used rarely.
Councilmember Matthews, it also sounds like there's a little bit of trouble hearing you, so when you're speaking into the mic, if you can lean a little bit closer. I can, we can hear you fine, I think it's on the, at the end of picking you up on the, in chambers.
Huh, because I did dial in, as instructed, so anyway.
I think you just need to speak louder.
Okay. Do you need me to repeat? Basically, this is based on a will use template. The importance is early training for all content.
Thank you. I just have, before we move on to the vote, I was just going to ask that maybe as a friendly amendment, or just as a recommendation, that the finalized policy be sent to all commissioners, council members, so that everybody has a copy of this updated policy and that, you know, if there's a, if they need to sign, stating that they've read the policy, that we make that as a part of this as well, so that there's no confusion?
I am happy to incorporate that as direction, follow-up direction to the adoption, that the newly adopted code of ethics and policy be distributed to, we all have it, but to commissioners, and that a standard part of orientation is the signed recognition that it's been received and read.
Great. If there's no further questions or comments, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll vote on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Byers?
Aye.
Matthews?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cummings?
Aye. That item passes unanimously. Okay, next on our agenda is our consent public hearing. This is item number 24. I'd also like to let members of the public know that if you're calling in about item number 25, which is Parks Master Plan, that item has been deleted from our agenda, and so just wanted to reaffirm and let folks know that if you're calling in about the Parks Master Plan item, that item will not be heard today. So our consent public hearing item, for members of the public who are streaming, if this is an item you would like to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. Are there any members of the, or city council members who would like to pull item number 24 from the agenda? Okay, seeing none, are there any comment, are there any council members who would only wish to comment on item number 24 on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak to item on our consent, item number 24 on our consent agenda, now is the time to do so. Please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it's your time to speak, you'll hear an announcement that you've been unmuted, and the timer will be set to two minutes. Okay, seeing no members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item, I'd like to bring it back to council for action and deliberation. Councilmember Matthews?
I'll go ahead and move the recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Myers? You're muted.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion, Councilmember Matthews, to move the consent public hearing item, seconded by Vice Mayor Myers. Is there any further questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the clerk to call the roll vote.
Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Matthews?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We're going to make it pretty quickly through our agenda, since we have deleted item number 25 from our agenda. We are on the last item on our agenda prior to oral communications. This is item number 26, imposing a prohibition on price gouging in the city of Santa Cruz following the CZU August lightning complex fire. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by the council member who brought this forward, followed by questions from council. We will then take public comment and return to the council for deliberation and action. I'm not sure, Tony, if you'd like to speak to this first, or if I could kick us off on this item?
Um, I, whatever is the pleasure of the mayor, I'm happy to introduce it, or if you'd like to, that's totally fine.
Sure, I can, I can go ahead and just give some context for this item. So as everyone's aware of the impacts of the CZU fire complex, many residents throughout the county were evacuated from their homes as a response to the fire, and as we're all aware, there's been hundreds, if not close to 1,000 homes lost throughout the county. We've had many residents who have been displaced and are staying in hotels. Folks who've lost their homes have now began looking for rentals. I mean, we do understand that the negative impacts on the infrastructure within these areas can make it very difficult. can make it very difficult and for people to return to their homes. And the timeframe for them to return is probably going to be pretty, you know, long-term impact. I had received emails, I'd received an email in particular where someone had reported that they were having a difficult circumstance with one of the hotels that they were trying to rent. And I do want to express my profound and sincere thanks to all the people in our community who have done such a good job of opening their homes with all, with the many hoteliers who have, you know, been really trying to help evacuees and for our community for really the generosity that's been outpouring from our, from everyone to try to support the victims of this fire. But what really prompted bringing this, in addition to that person who reached out, was her, you know, hearing of a couple other instances where evacuees were being impacted and potentially displaced from their hotels when they had nowhere else to go. And thinking in, thinking about communities who have been previously impacted after the Paradise Fire, the Santa Rosa fires, where they really started seeing rents going, rents increasing in terms of people who were trying to find rentals as a result of an increase in demand. Just really wanting to try to get in front of this before it became a problem. And with many people being concerned with that, I thought that it would be something good to bring forward to the council for discussion and action. In addition to this, I'll mention that I did speak to some of the county supervisors. And I know council, or county supervisor Coonerty mentioned to me that an item would be going on the county's agenda for their September fourteenth meeting. And so the idea is that, you know, we could discuss putting this, you know, we could discuss this today, adopting an emergency prohibition on price gouging. And, you know, should the county adopt something similar, we could align ours potentially with the county in the future. But before we go into further discussion, I'd like to also turn it over to the city attorney for further information. And I'd also like to say similarly, this was not something that kind of came out of nowhere. It's, a lot of it's based off of other cities that have imposed similar ordinances. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to provide further background on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cummings and members of the city council. First of all, I'd like to just go through the categories of, different categories of what's defined by the state law as price gouging, to list what is prohibited by this. So it makes it unlawful to sell consumer food items or goods or services used for emergency cleanup, emergency supplies, medical supplies, home heating oil, building materials, transportation, freight and storage service, or gasoline or motor fuels by more than 10% of the advertised price prior to the declaration of the emergency. The second category is repair or reconstruction services or services used in emergency cleanup. The third category is, makes it unlawful for the operator of a hotel or motel or other transient occupancy, like a short-term rental, to increase their prices by 10% more than the advertised price immediately prior to the proclamation of an emergency. And the fourth category is a prohibition on eviction of any residential tenant or tenant of residential housing for the purpose of renting to another person at rental price that's greater than the evicted tenant could be charged or was being charged prior to the proclamation of an emergency. You may have questions about why this is being brought forward if it's already covered by state law. That's a question that I received over the weekend. And, and the reason why is that under the state law, this automatically kicks in on the proclamation of an emergency by the governor or by the city council, but it is only in effect for 30 days, except for the, it's only in effect for 30 days, and then it expires automatically under the state law. So what this does is give, gives the council an opportunity to extend that prohibition beyond 30 days. And so that's the reason why action is necessary. Otherwise, the price gouging prohibition would expire on its own. The second thing I wanted to point out is that this has been brought forward by way of an ordinance, an emergency ordinance, that the council can opt, adopt on a, on a five-vote majority. However, under the charter, when you adopt an emergency ordinance, it has to be published within 15 days of adoption in, in order for it to remain in effect. It takes effect immediately, but it has to be published subsequent to that within 15 days. And the city clerk pointed out to me last week that under our charter, when we do that publication, it costs the city about $1,500. And so, so that's, that's the fiscal impact that, that the city has. And the city has a budget for publications in connection with city council meetings. But the statute also requires that the declaration be extended by successive 30-day periods in order to remain in effect. So the council will need to take action every 30 days, as long as it sees the need to have these restrictions in effect. And what city clerk pointed out to me was that that would essentially use up the city council's entire budget for publication of ordinances within a couple of. And so what I'm looking into between now and the next meeting is whether or not this could be extended by a simple resolution, which would not require, require publication. And so that would just be to avoid the fiscal impact of having to continually publish the same prohibitions that would, that would remain in effect. Assuming that to be the case, then we would come back to the council on the 22nd of September. Because otherwise, the first meeting in October, which is the 13th, is more than 30 days from today. So it would expire before your next, before the first October meeting. And so assuming that a resolution is an appropriate way to go forward, I would expect this to be on the consent calendar for the next couple of months until the council directs that it be lifted. I'm happy to answer any questions that councilmembers have.
Tony, I had one follow-up question to that. So would it be that if we made the declaration today, that will be followed by a resolution at the next meeting, should we want to extend it?
That's, that's what I'm hoping, yes.
Uh, councilmember Watkins?
Um, thank you for the, for the summary of it. And I, I know, having kind of just tracked the news, that this does happen in certain communities. And so we do want to be ahead of it. Mayor, I think if I heard you correctly, you mentioned that you were in communication with the county about this. I mean, I'd be interested in understanding a little bit more about what direction they're headed in as well.
So I shared with them the language of this ordinance, and they were going to bring something similar forward. And Tony, I don't know if their offices reached out to you, but I'd heard that they might be reaching out to you as well.
They have not at this point, but I can certainly reach out to the county council and get their input.
Um, I have, I have one other question in terms of the procedure. If I, sorry, I'm trying to take all what you said in, Tony. In terms of procedurally, it sounds like the emergency is the added cost associated with this policy direction. But if, if for, if for cost savings and for alignment with county, if it were brought back as a regular sort of ordinance, what does that look like in terms of, of changes? Nothing different other than the cost, or?
There's still a publication requirement for an ordinance that's brought forward in the ordinary course. The concern I have about that is that the penal code, which provides you with the authorization to take this action, states that the prohibitions may be extended for additional 30-day periods as needed by a local legislative body, a local official, the governor, or the legislature. So it does not allow this type of regulation to remain in effect in perpetuity, which is generally what happens when you adopt a new ordinance. And so I suppose what we could do is, in fact, I'm thinking of it right now, is modify this to say, or for additional periods as determined by resolution of the city council. So that would be the language that I would add to the effective date and the expiration date of the ordinance.
Okay. I just have, I have one last question. In terms of the findings, the declaration is the finding that we've declared an emergency associated with the fire to move in this direction, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you. I think that's it for right now.
Councilmember Matthews?
Um, am I correct in understanding that the state anti-gouging provisions are in effect for 30 days?
Yes, except for the, and this is one I was searching for in my presentation, but the prohibition on price gouging in repair services is for 180 days.
Oh. Even more.
Right.
Oh, well, my own preference would be to continue this to our next meeting, have more of a conversation with the county in terms of syncing up with their language and their findings of urgency. And it was also, I also spoke with someone at the county. They pointed out to me the fee for violation is much lower than our proposed ordinance that it is in the state. So there's probably just some consistency issues that should be resolved ahead of time. I also had some, I just thought it would be worth raising the issue that particularly for hotels and motels, their rates are, as I think everyone understands, very fluid according to season and day of the week and weather, all sorts of other things. And particularly immediately before the fire, that industry was in total recall with zero oxygen, so their rates were probably, you know, half. I looked at their average daily rate, and immediately, the few months, most recent months, their average rate for the season were about half of what they were in the normal year. So 10% up from that would be artificially low because they were in an extreme recession. We see where I'm going with that. And I'm not trying to plead for a blank check, but I'm just saying, in that case, it seems like an extraordinary circumstance. So that probably just takes a little bit of examination. So for all those reasons, largely just consistently with the, with what the county's doing and the idea of doing it by revolution, which is easier to continue. My preference would be to continue to the next meeting. And then I would just ask Mayor, what you did envision and the duration of this? Because rebuilding, I mean, that's going to be going on for a while. That's not a 30-day or 50-day thing. So I am just, that's just an honest question of the sort of duration of that.
Yeah, I'll let other councilmembers ask questions, then I'll, I'll circle back to that one. Councilmember Matthews. Vice Mayor Myers?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a question, Tony, maybe for you. So, so the state law is, is it AB 396? That is the emergency price gouging ordinance, correct?
Yes, the provision of the penal code, but yes, you're right.
And I'm sorry, I think I missed something. And the length of that is, is 30 days after the declaration of an emergency?
Correct. Except for repair and cleanup services, which extends for 180 days.
Okay, so for people who maybe obviously wouldn't, repair doesn't mean replace then in that, in that particular setting?
Uh, it's, it's repair or reconstruction services used in emergency cleanup. So construction, I think, I think it would apply in that, in that situation. But if that's the.
If someone's home was burned, I was just trying to think, if someone's home was burned down, then potentially the state law might provide that relief to make sure that there's no gouging for that reconstruction period? Even though that would be optimistic that people were building their homes, but hopefully back in six months, hopefully.
I think it's worth pointing out that, you know, arguably, that provision might apply to people who hire, say, a landscape maintenance contractor to clean up ash from the fire that has affected most areas of Santa Cruz. But there, you know, there's not a, a building that has been destroyed within city limits or repairs or reconstruction within the city that's attributable to the fire.
Right, okay. And then the recent state, I think it was, I don't know if it was Senate bill or Assembly bill, 3088, which was passed last, August 31st. That was the eviction ban till March 1st, 2021. So evictions, we've got coverage now. So this is really just, I think I saw an earlier version, just making sure that evictions, we've got coverage now through state law. So I just wanted to kind of clarify a little bit between the, the intent. And so that's, that's now in place, that we do have evictions covered. I guess my thought on this, yeah, is I'm, I'm really in recognition of the management and actually deep appreciation for what, especially supervisors Coonerty and McPherson are doing for their constituents right now. And I just, I think really understanding where the county may be going with this is, I think, really fruitful for us to be able to, to have that evaluation. And I did speak with supervisor Coonerty's office specifically about this. And I do know that they do intend to bring something forward. So I think sort of having them help take the lead might be, I, I'm just very interested in that and making sure that we crafted ordinance that's, you know, sort of following their intentions. And so I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards maybe taking some time and postponing this for just another meeting or so. Thank you.
Councilmember Golda?
So my question is, is if the county does take action at their next meeting, would the city be covered under that kind of umbrella of whatever action they take? And would that cause us to not have to spend the $1,500 to publish? Because theirs would take precedence?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question, would you, would you?
So the question is, if, if Mayor Cummings passed on his language to the county and the county's considering a similar ordinance at their next meeting, and we kind of just push, push the pause button on ours, and theirs took effect, it would in essence like encompass the whole county, including the city, correct? That's what I'm wondering, is the city also included? So it wouldn't be included in that?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. So even if this county enacted something, that little, the city of Santa Cruz would not be included?
Just the county.
Just the county?
I believe it only apply in the unincorporated areas of the county.
So complicated, because all of the building is going to be done in the unincorporated areas of the county. And like, yeah, but I'm guessing most of the residents are probably, yeah, going to be trying to find a place to stay in the city temporarily.
Yeah, without, without, you know, without any evidence at this point that price gouging is actually occurring or will occur, I think it's reasonable to assume if it did, it would be in relation to rentals of hotels and motels, possibly residential rentals to the extent that that's not already prohibited by the recent state law. And, and sale of goods and services, because repairs and reconstruction are not going to take place within the city of Santa Cruz. So, so this, while this ordinance mirrors the prohibitions of state law, but, so this, while this ordinance mirrors the prohibitions of state law, um, it doesn't necessarily presuppose that, um, all of these categories would happen here in Santa Cruz or could happen here in Santa Cruz under the circumstances.
And I guess that, um, well, Vice Mayor Myers, you had a, I'm sorry, hand up. Councilmember Brown.
Sorry, go ahead, Mayor. I would like to, I did raise my hand, but I'll, I'll wait till questions are done.
Yeah, and I was looking back, you know, at some of the language on, um, rental pricing, because that's one of the things that I think most concerns me is this, you know, the idea that people are going to be looking for housing. And a lot of folks are right now starting to work through their insurance claims and what they're going to get covered by FEMA. And the idea that, you know, people haven't necessarily immediately started looking for rental housing, but they're going to be doing that in the near future as people start to understand how their properties have been impacted in the mountains. And then when, as people start making more decisions on, um, you know, where they're going to live next. And, um, the conversations I've heard from people, um, many people who, once they find out they, they've lost their home, they immediately try to start scrambling to find rentals. And so as we're now getting into this point where, you know, there's on the order of, you know, over a thousand families who might be looking for homes, that's one of the things that most concerns me with, um, you know, what impact it could have on our community in terms of rentals. And, and it's going to be, you know, I, I think we're in a sense somewhat lucky right now that we don't have as many students coming back, because, you know, had we been in that situation, but that's obviously moving forward is going to be an issue as well. And so I, I feel like one of the, you know, things that I'm most concerned with is ensuring that people who are evacuated can, you know, securely find housing and that, you know, rates aren't going to go up as a result of, you know, people, as a, as a result of increase in demand. So, um, in addition to the, you know, hotel issues that we've already seen happen, um, and just the knowledge that there will be an increase in, in demand for, for supplies, especially in a market that's already been impacted by COVID. So. Uh, Councilmember, well, Vice Mayor Myers, you had your question, then Councilmember Brown, you had your comments.
Um, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll take my hand down. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really have any questions, um, at the moment, so I'll, I'll just wait to hear public comments.
Uh, Councilmember Watkins.
Um, Tony, can I get a clarifying question? I just want to make sure I heard you accurately. Did you say that a number of the rental housing protections that are encompassed in this are already protected by the recent state law or the governor's order? Is that, or did I mishear you?
What the recent state law protects is evictions of people who are financially impacted by COVID-19. So that, that is typically what the recent state law addresses. So there may
Go ahead, Mr.
And so what this ordinance, or what this law prohibits is evicting someone for purposes of clearing the unit, uh, to rent it as someone who has been impacted by, um, by the emergency and who may, I mean, the fear, the, the thought is, or the fear is that someone who is being reimbursed by an insurance company may be able to pay higher rents than someone who is not otherwise impacted. And so the, the law prohibits eviction of a tenant for purposes of clearing the unit in order to make room for another, um, tenant who's, who's supported by insurance proceeds.
Okay. I think, I think I got that. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. It's complicated.
By the way, some of that would, would be covered by the law that was signed, um, the statute that was signed into law last year that, that addresses, um, uh, no-fault evictions. So, so that might overlap somewhat, uh, as well.
Right. Um, the one thing that comes to mind for me too is just, and maybe this is more of a comment, but if, if we're interested in learning what the county's going to be doing, I think that would be really helpful in not only informing our jurisdiction, but our neighboring jurisdictions like Capitola and beyond. And I say that because, um, sort of even just being around town at the dog park or talking to people who may be displaced, they're staying at a friend's house in Capitola, or they're out in somewhere else, not necessarily in the city, although they're, they're, you know, hanging out in the city. But I think if we're going to holistically look at the impacts of those displaced as a region, it might be worthwhile to have, have the county take the lead on that for all of our, all of our jurisdictions potentially. So just sort of a thought that comes to mind.
And one thing I wanted to point out too in the rentals, because one of the issues that this is also trying to address is if there are units that are vacant or that become vacant, it's really to protect that increase in the amount that those units can be charged for. So there's one section in here that really focuses on if a unit becomes vacant during the time of proclamation, that it can only be increased by 5% above that previous price, price it was charged at. And if it wasn't, um, on the market, um, that, um, 160% of fair market rent established by Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that could be increased by 5% if the housing is, is fully furnished. So I guess the point is that a big part of this is also to ensure that if there are vacant units, that those, you know, units aren't, we're not going to see exorbitant increase in the price of those units that were previously vacant or become vacant during this time as a way of people trying to, you know, capitalize off, um, what's a big disaster in our area.
I, I guess I would just add that in response to council members' comments, um, is that one of the, one of the recommended actions is to coordinate countywide efforts to provide temporary protection from price gouging, uh, among all of the jurisdictions in the county. So, um, so that is consistent with, um, what, what some council members have been commenting on. Uh, so whether you adopt an ordinance today or defer action until you see what the county's done, um, you know, there, there is an intention here to do outreach and, um, work with the other jurisdictions to, to try to, um, get us all on the same page with respect to these emergency protections.
Uh, Vice Mayor Myers, and then Councilmember Brown.
I just had one clarifying question, Tony. Um, so with regards to, um, didn't quite get clarification on the question that Councilmember Watkins was asking. Um, so, so can you, okay, so there's the state law with regards to COVID, um, but there's no, there's no protection through the emergency declaration. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, trying to understand exactly what our risk level is and I'm trying to accommodate, um, I, I, I guess I'm kind of getting a little bit lost in the, in the, um, so the, the rental piece, if, if someone evicts a tenant to try to raise the price of the unit in order for, um, someone who is looking for a home because of losing their home, there's no protections for that right now in the state law?
There is some protection from that in the law that was enacted that went into effect on January 1st. Um, that also had some limited restrictions on, on price increases. I mean, I think that, that what you're pointing to is, is, uh, I guess, or the point that needs to be made is that, um, you know, this is somewhat of a blunt instrument, and it has not been updated out of recent, uh, actions by the legislature. And I also think that, um, you know, it's not, it's not, uh, unprecedented to have overlapping state and local restrictions on the same subject matter. And so, um, I'm not, I'm not prepared today to say that, uh, that this ordinance, um, doesn't all, doesn't prohibit, uh, actions that are already prohibited under state law. The, I think that council moves forward, it, it would be with the recognition that there's, there's some overlap here. And so, um, some of it may be already covered. Um, but just in the time during which, um, we've had to analyze this, and also in light of the limited, um, authorization provided by the penal code under these circumstances, uh, this has merely been intended to, um, extend the prohibitions that are already in place under the California Penal Code. And so the county could certainly direct that a more refined approach be brought back for further consideration, at which time we sort of screen all the existing, uh, state law and local regulations to, to make sure that we're not, um, you know, wearing a, a belt and suspenders on all of these different restrictions. So, so that's certainly the direction that the council, um, could give. But it wasn't really contemplated exercise, which is focused on, um, merely providing a mechanism for extending prohibitions of state law.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown, and then Tony, I have a question as well.
Yeah, so my question is really for my colleagues here. I think I understand the purpose, and I understand the, um, the reasons that I'm hearing for thinking about doing this differently. Um, but the, I believe the question is, does our city leadership want to declare that price gouging is inappropriate and unacceptable? And to figure out, I don't think we need to take the time to figure out how we can patchwork together other state, uh, laws and to make sure that we don't have to do this. I just don't understand why we wouldn't just adopt this as an emergency ordinance today and move forward, coordinating with the county, uh, uh, moving forward with their, their program. So, um, it's just a question. Um, I'll, uh, wait to hear if there are members of the public who want to speak, and then I'm prepared to make a motion.
I also want to revisit, I know, uh, Councilmember Matthews had brought up, um, how long this would be in effect. And, you know, I think that what's really kind of encouraged me to bring this forward is just, you know, really wanting to respond to the impact of the fire. And, um, you know, given that we've seen how negatively other communities have been impacted when they've seen similar disasters occur, you know, that's the motivation for bringing this forward. I do think that there is a desire, you know, the county's mentioned, I've been in communication when, you know, when we had worked on this item, I'd sent it to, um, Supervisor Coonerty so that they could have a copy of this and, you know, work on this as well. Um, I think that, um, you know, by moving forward and then being in, in, you know, communication with the county, I think that we have an opportunity to find alignment on when the county will be thinking about, um, allowing this to expire. Um, it may be that, you know, if, maybe that in Watsonville, you know, they don't feel that this is something, um, they want to do, just given how far away they are from North County. And so, you know, might, there's, there's a possibility that some of our, um, some of the other cities want to get on board, but possibly not. And it might be that, you know, cities like Scotts Valley would want to have this in place longer just because of the fact that they, you know, are so close to where those damage areas occur. So, um, my hope is, you know, was really to try to get something out that would, um, kind of put some protections in place that could be refined over time as we try to, you know, come into alignment. But just, you know, the fact that, um, that, you know, no one's really brought these forward. I thought that it's something that I was hearing, you know, from the community. Um, there are council members who've mentioned, um, you know, some bad activities that have occurred as it relates to hotels. And I've also heard that from other supervisors. So, you know, the intention was really to, to try to answer those kind of calls for help from, from people who are being negatively impacted. And in terms of, you know, longevity, I think that there is an opportunity for us to, to really assess that moving forward. Um, so, you know, it doesn't have to be a year or six months. I think that we could really, as time went on and we saw stability within our housing and people moving into, you know, temporary, long-term temporary housing, we can make, you know, assessments on, you know, what would be the appropriate timeline for allowing this to expire. So, to answer your question, to get, to get to some of what you were asking, I think that that's kind of my, my stand on, on how long this would need to be in effect. So if there's no further questions or comments from council, uh, what we can do is open up to the public. Um, so if there are members of the public who are stringing this meeting, if this is an, if this is an item you would like to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. Um, once you've called in, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And when it's your time to speak, you'll hear an announcement that you've been unmuted, and the timer will be set to two minutes. And again, this is for item number 26, interim emergency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Cruz imposing a prohibition on price gouging in the City of Santa Cruz following the CZU August Lightning Fire Complex. So again, any members of the public would like to speak to this item, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will be given two minutes to speak on this item. Okay, seeing that there are, um, having not seen any hands from members of the public, I'll bring it back to council for action and deliberation. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, uh, that I, I didn't make before during the question period, uh, to suggest that, you know, I, 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 I think this is something that we can do right now, uh, to declare that we believe this is, that price gouging is unacceptable. People are in crisis, um, and this is going to be going on for quite some time. We have seen the outpouring of, uh, you know, compassion, generosity, mutual aid, and I believe that is, you know, the best of Santa Cruz, and I believe that is most of Santa Cruz. And, um, so I'm not suggesting that this is necessary because there is some predatory behavior looming, but I do believe that we should make that kind of declaration and have some assurance that, um, we're not leaving space for bad actors, uh, you know, those who would act in, in, in bad faith while people are in crisis. So with that, I'm going to, uh, move that. And I also wanted to say I, you know, I'm not, not going to repeat Mayor Cummings', uh, points about why, um, he was bringing this forward. I appreciate it, and I completely agree. Um, so with that, I'll move that we adopt an emergency ordinance and coordinate the countywide effort to provide, uh, temporary protection from price gouging in residential rentals, hotels, and other short-term rentals, and goods and services for residents and individuals displaced by the CZU August Lightning Fire Complex fires. Um, and then to direct the mayor to send a letter to, uh, the governor requesting issuance of an executive order suspending the 30-day expiration period specified by penal code, Section 396, for local price gouging regulation. And, yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Byers.
Um, well, I'll second the motion first. Uh, but I was just listening to the questions back and forth, and I just sort of landed at, why would we not do this? To me, it's just showing our community where our hearts are, where our thoughts are, and whatever we could do. Will it do something? I don't think any of us know for sure, but I just see no downside in simply doing it as a statement and hopefully, um, have our communities back if they need it in these issues.
Councilmember Matthews.
I, I don't support moving ahead, and I think that we, uh, it's justified. There are quite a few uncertainties. There is There is protection offered by, as I understand it, the state penal code right now for between 30 days and 180 days depending on this product. And I would much prefer to express our interest in dealing with this and come back at the, at our very next meeting to give us time to coordinate with the county, other jurisdictions, to give full consideration protections included, either included or limited by state law and do this in the most efficient mechanism from a procedural point of view for the city's operations. So that's how I would prefer to approach and that's why I won't support the motion at hand. I would be prepared to make a substitute motion on.
Councilmember Goldar and then Councilmember Watkins.
I have a question for Councilmember Brown. And so at the end of your motion, you said something about the 30 days. Can you explain, or the letter to the governor, can you explain that one more time so I can hear it again? I missed that.
Sure, yeah, it's in, it's the, just the wording that was in the packet, I read it out.
Okay, okay, sorry.
And so the, the goal is to ask for dispensation so we are not issuing a 30-day, every 30 days and then paying the $1,500, you know, that Tony was describing earlier.
So what Tony was describing earlier, we pay the $1,500, that's it? It wouldn't be $1,500 a month to renew? Okay.
Oh, let me clarify.
Yeah, the city attorney could maybe step in.
So that the statute allows the council to extend the prohibitions for successive additional 30-day periods. And in 2018, in connection with the, just the horrible Sonoma County fires, the governor issued an executive order that suspended that 30-day provision. So that allowed local agencies that adopted price gouging to keep them in effect for a longer period of time. So the request would be, the government do a similar executive order in this instance. And then, I know that there may be a substitute motion, but to the extent this motion did not address bringing this back as a resolution, I was wondering if the mayor consider including that as well.
Yes, yes, thank you for the reminder. I wrote it down and then I just read off that from the agenda report. So I just, now I want to make sure I'm clear because my understanding was that the rationale for requesting the extension, well, maybe it was twofold, but that it also, it also allowed us to not have to reissue an emergency every 30 days and be subject to those reporting requirements, public noticing requirement. So is that, is that correct?
Well, it's both the fiscal impact of having to publish successively as well as just the, I guess I'll call it the hassle factor of having to take action within days of the prior action. So in this instance, we would need to bring it back on the 22nd of September because the next meeting in October is more than 30 days from today. And then if you take action on September 22nd, we would have to bring it back on October 13th because the next council meeting after the 22nd is more than 30 days from the 22nd. So that's, those are the two reasons for that.
Thanks. So I think, I think, this is the other thing I was kind of wanting to say is to take, to speak to Councilmember Byers is like why we wouldn't do this. And I think everybody on the council and probably in the meeting wholeheartedly agrees that price gouging is horrible. The only thing I would think is that if it was going to occur, I would guess it would happen either probably with the rebuilding process and maybe I'm being naive, but I remember the day the power went back on after the earthquake, my dad's answering machine had 99 messages on it and that was as high as it would go because he was a masonry contractor. Everyone's chimney fell down. And so the thing that I learned after that was then all of a sudden these out-of-town masons came to town, sirens on top, and they were doing the price gouging. And so if there was a way for us to work with the county on like, or maybe with Bonnie on like distributing a list of reputable contractors within the city or county or working with people on those kind of strategies, because the way I foresee like people getting ripped off would be in that reconstruction process in some way and more with the services rather than maybe the goods. And I think like right now the dust has kind of settled as far as like the hotels, like people are either in a hotel or a temporary shelter and I think they're probably moving towards like, like the mayor said, like what's the next thing, like long-term months to years where however long the rebuilding process is going to take. I think as, as much as we can align with what's happening in the city and state, I think would be, and offer the same kind of protection, that, that's where, you know, my mind is going is that, yes, I 100% want something on the books, but I think it is more applying to the county than the city right now. And I don't know. That's my thought.
I just have a quick question for the city attorney and I don't see the fires you found, but I'm just, or yeah, I see the fires you found as well and maybe he can speak to this as well, but I'm just wondering when the emergency was declared for this particular fire complex, because I would imagine that that was probably declared at least, you know, the fire was.
August 16.
16. So 30 days from that's going to go beyond, beyond, you know.
That the city manager declared a local emergency on the 21st of August, so it would be measured from that date at the, and then the council also took action on the 25th of August by adopting a resolution barring the existence of a state of emergency. And the statute does extend from, three days from the date of a declaration of emergency by the, by the governor or by a local agency. So, so arguably, the most recent declaration was the 25th of August.
Okay, I just wanted to double check on that. Councilmember Watkins.
Um, I, I think there's, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, I think there's really a lot of agreement around what we're wanting to see here, which is not to have price gouging acceptable in our community. What we can do is a local jurisdiction to prevent that and to put in policies to protect people. I do, just sort of speaking to some folks up there who are looking at how they're managing their properties, I do think in terms of the comments that, that Councilmember Goldar made in regards to those that are doing services in the fire, the cleanup of the ash and those who are going to be contracted to clean up the ash, it's so, so heavy and thick up there that they were saying it's, it's going to be hard to find people to do that. So I do think there is definitely going to be areas where we're going to need to have really strong policy in place for price gouging. I do also feel like I'm hearing a couple of things that one, that this could potentially not be the most cost-effective approach and, and Tony, if I'm mishearing you or what Bonnie's concerns was, you know, I welcome your input on that. And that too, that they're still interested in wanting to learn more about what the county is doing in terms of their item coming on the 15th or is that, did I hear you, it was saying at the next meeting that the county is having? So I, I don't know, I guess I'm wondering if this isn't an emergency item that has passed and how can we, to Councilmember Brown's point, acknowledge that, one, I think we've all seen a really outpouring of generosity and contribution of, from our community and two, that we won't, we won't enable those who are trying to take advantage of the situation. And if it's not in the form of an emergency ordinance at this moment, I don't know how else that could be expressed. I don't know if you have thoughts on that, Tony?
Well, the, the penal code merely states that the prohibitions can be extended by action of the local legislative body. It doesn't clearly specify that it has to be by ordinance. And that's why I suggested that, and what I would explore between now and the next meeting is bringing this forward in the form of a resolution. In preparing for this item under time constraints, the most logical avenue forward appeared to me to be an emergency ordinance and that's what I've seen examples of other cities doing as well. But with a little more time to reflect on it, it makes, and, and given the comments that were made by the city clerk only after the, the item was published or at, I guess, last Thursday on the date that the report was going to be published, the sort of the fiscal impact consideration didn't really play into my analysis in preparing the item.
So you are suggesting, if I'm hearing what you're saying accurately, you're suggesting that you would like additional time, if this does not pass, to then bring this back after consulting with the county in the form of a resolution? Does that sound correct?
I would continue to explore that as a possibility merely for the, for the ease of taking action and the, and the procedural, you know, eliminating procedural burdensomeness of it. And also the fact that, you know, you need five votes to get this thing adopted today. So, so that could also affect the voting that would be needed in order to take action.
Okay, yeah, okay. No, I appreciate that and I think, you know, if, if the county hasn't done it as an emergency and it's in the unincorporated areas and then, and you were, and you felt rushed as not to be able to further explore that, that maybe that could be a path forward. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews and then Vice Mayor Myers and Councilmember Brown.
I think we're all awfully close here. I'm just wondering if the mayor's motion would consider revising it to say that the city council was committed to addressing the issue of price gouging, recognizing that there are current protections offered by state law and we can adopt a local resolution prior to the expiration of those protections, that we continue this to the next meeting, et cetera. So again, for the purpose of coordinating as much as possible with the county's efforts and that we adopt this, we do this in the most efficient mechanism from the city's procedural point of view. I think we're just all there.
That, Councilmember Matthews, thank you for raising that. I think that's a different motion however, so I'd like to just go ahead and vote on this one. I think I know where it's going, but I don't understand why we want to try to make this, overly complicate this as a, I'm just not sure what the goal is in trying to put it off and given that there's not really a downside to doing it now, aside from, I, I don't even see the downside of going, doing this out of the county if we're going to be coordinating with them. Mayor Cummings has already been in contact with them, so it just, it doesn't, I'm just not clear why we would just avoid this right now. So I'll just go ahead and leave the motion as is and with the addition of bringing this back by resolution, that the city attorney mentioned and then we'll, well, you can go ahead and make that motion.
Then I would like to, with the, with the third motion.
Um.
Sorry, I couldn't hear Cynthia. Cynthia, can you, I couldn't hear what you just said.
Yeah, I, I'd like to then offer a substitute, I mean, a substitute motion. The city council is committed to taking action on the issue of price gouging following the local wildfires, recognizing there are currently protections in place for price gouging under state law and that we can take action at our next meeting within the, prior to the expiration of those protections, that we continue this to the next meeting with instructions to coordinate as much as possible with the county's anti-gouging regulations and efforts and that we bring this back in the most efficient form from the city's procedural point of view.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Matthews, is there any way we can get that like on screen?
Oh.
I have it. I got it. I'll, I'll share my screen.
Okay, thanks Bonnie.
I was just going to type it out and email.
So that motion was made by Councilmember Matthews, seconded by Vice Mayor Myers. I know there were some hands up, so I'll see if I can get to these. Yeah, Vice Mayor Myers, you were up next.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I seconded the substitute motion and actually the mayor and I talked about this quite a bit last week. Absolutely no intent that we don't acknowledge of an entirety of a community, the tragedy that people are experiencing up in the valley, Bonnydo, out on the north coast. And, you know, I've heard reference to Santa Rosa, Paradise, those both were, you know, towns, town council and cities that actually were, there was, you know, tremendous damage done within, within the governing limits of those jurisdictions. So I, I really think that we would all benefit and I actually think a regional approach is really critical. And I, I really, I just support the concept of actually working cooperatively with our, our co-government leaders over at the county. This, again, the fires are in the county jurisdiction and I trust very much that Supervisor Coonerty, Supervisor McPherson are absolutely laser-focused, as are all the supervisors, on helping, helping the constituents up in those locations. So this is not, you know, from my perspective, this is not trying to output or offset or delay any kind of protection for people who need to either find resources or move into permanent or temporary housing here in the city. I feel like we, we really would benefit as an entirety of a county to really just take the time. The county will be looking at this in seven days and I think it's just, it's, it's really important for us to work with them regionally on this. And again, I think if it gets a good pass to go and I, I, I'd also support the idea of having a resolution passed as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I, I just want to add in response to some of the concerns expressed or the statements about this being an issue affecting folks in the county and not within the city limits. Those are the very same people who are right now sheltered, some of them within the city limits, who are looking at finding potentially short-term rentals or longer term, depending on how long the rebuilding process takes. And much of that is going to happen within the city. So, and, and the, the goods and, you know, and the contracting services and all of those things are often based within the city. So I do believe that we have a responsibility to, you know, in, in recognizing that, to address it right here within our own jurisdiction. And I also, I just fundamentally disagree that doing this now is somehow negating a desire to coordinate with the county. I, that's just not the case. So I'll, I'll leave it there and wait to vote on, we'll be voting on accepting the substitute before voting on the substitute motion. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah, no, I was, I was about to say something. So we have a substitute motion, it's currently on the floor and I'll just state that I, you know, I don't want to, you know, downplay any of my colleagues and any of our desire to try to help our residents. I think this is a, you know, there's two different approaches that we're, we're taking at this and, you know, this, and, you know, one of the things that was recommended before I brought this forward was that I went to the, you know, I discussed this with the county first, and so that's one of the, you know, reasons why I was so encouraged to bring this forward, and also with following up with county supervisors, and county supervisor Coonerty in particular, you know, asking, again, whether they were going to bring something forward, to which they shouldn't. He said that they would be. So I just want to, you know, put it out there that this, you know, wasn't, part of what really encouraged me to bring this forward was those conversations with the county. And I guess I have one more question for the city attorney, which is, if we, I just want to get some clarification around the resolution, because it seems to me that, you know, regardless of what we do, we're going to have to make, declare some kind of emergency. And then the timeline associated with that emergency, you know, potentially if the language is in the emergency that we can bring back resolution to extend that timeline, that's what we're, that's what that resolution would allow for. Is that correct?
What I had in mind was adding language to the draft ordinance that's in front of you that would allow the prohibitions of the ordinance to be extended by subsequent city council action by resolution. If I could share my screen, Bonnie?
Oh. Yeah, that makes sense, and it seems like it's similar to what we did with the eviction protections, the COVID-19 evictions protections, kind of aligning them with state law.
Right, and we'll be bringing that back to the council at the second meeting in September, and the COVID-19 emergency declaration in additional 60 days.
Okay. So I guess, all that's to say that, you know, there's a lot of thought that went into this, and, you know, I think that we all want the same things, and, you know, if we end up on a different path to getting there, that's fine. I think that we're going to be, you know, we're trying, we're all trying to do what's best for the community. But I, you know, I think that right now we have two different approaches, and, you know, regardless of the outcome, my hope is that we can just get protections that our residents need, and that we're kind of ahead of any type of negative impacts that could, impacts that could negatively affect our residents and people in our community. Councilmember Matthews.
I agree with you on that. I do have a question, and maybe a suggestion. To the extent that we're hearing about possible gouging right now, I think it would be, and to the extent that where it's most likely happening is in the unincorporated area, it might be useful to ask the county, the supervisors, to let people know how to file a complaint on that, because they've been very good about notifying residents and businesses about, if you have a claim about this, here's who you contact, et cetera. So I think that's a request we could get to them right away, if people do feel that there's been gouging, who do they turn to in terms of the state complaints? That's just a suggestion. And then I did have a question for Tony. Does the gouging occur where the service is delivered, or where the business is rotating? That is, let's just say there's a building supply place in the city of Santa Cruz, but the job is up in the county, where?
Well, if you have, you know, what the nature of the gouging is. And so clearly, in rental housing, that would be rental housing located within the city of Santa Cruz.
Yeah, I get that. I'm thinking more the building supply.
Building supply, I argue, is the location where the sale is made, as opposed to where the goods are delivered.
So that would be the business?
Hey, the Penal Code, Section 396, does not have a long list of reported appellate decisions in the annotations that flesh out the nuances of that. And so, you know, that would be a prosecutor's.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't think we have a second yet.
Oh, it was, the motion was made by Councilmember Matthews, seconded by Vice Mayor Myers.
Got it.
Yeah, I guess my only last comment would be, I think we, I think what I'm hearing from everybody is the same, which is essentially, how can we as a community come together to support this really tragic event, and whether it be to do something immediately, or to have a little bit more information and coordination, that this isn't really a, you know, a need to be politicized, but this is a need for us to come together to support our residents. So I appreciate the sentiments that were shared by every council member, and including you, the mayor, in terms of how we want to really do right by our community, and the paths are different, but they're essentially with the same intentions. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Byers. You're muted, by the way.
Councilmember Watkins finished her statement, because I've been trying to figure out, there are two paths, we're on the path, we're committed to doing it, and I can't quite figure out exactly what the difference is. If we're all going to do it in two weeks, or why not do it here? Somebody tell me, what is the difference? Can anyone answer that? Or it is political, or it isn't political?
No.
Well, that's why I'm just trying to, I'm asking the question, because nobody answered. One is, would be immediately today, it'd be effective the eighth, from Tony's words there, or we delay it for two weeks? And it may or may not be what the county's doing, or maybe the county are struggling, like we're all struggling, and don't do it next week, or whatever. I don't know. I just, I'm trying to sort that out. I, we're on a path, but anyway, if anyone's got any words, that's struggling with that. I'm not so much struggling with it, I'm just trying to understand it.
Councilmember Matthews, and Councilmember Watkins.
Oh, I, you know, not to drag this out too much, but I think we often find that we can be more effective when there's, when we increase the degree of consistency of regulations, whether they be plastic pollution, or whatever, among the jurisdictions. And particularly, this is one that the fires are in the mountains, but I think the repercussions are being felt on a much more regional basis. That's obvious. So to the extent we can come up with a more consistent package of protections, I think that benefits everybody. It benefits the consumers, it benefits the service providers. We are not removing any of the protections currently in place by state law. We can take action and hopefully be more consistent with what the rest of the county's doing, and do it in a way that's efficient from the point of view of city procedures, and have it in place, have it on the agenda, and do it at our next meeting, and express our commitment to get this done.
Councilmember Byers.
So just one more question. In a sense, then, we would be, we would be the first out of the chute with this action, and maybe the county will look at ours and adopt what we're doing. But my guess, my question is, Tony, if we do it, and then we see that the county has stuck something in theirs that's a little bit, I don't know, stronger, or whatever, how do we amend our original?
Well, it's going to come, have to come back to the council anyway, so, you know, if, now in the 22nd, there is a coordination of efforts among the cities and the county, then I would imagine we would be bringing back something that's more uniform with what the other jurisdictions are doing. And if, and if, they might just look at this and say, that's a great model, let's go with it, or we might decide that some more nuanced approach is preferable.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Okay, with that, if there's no further questions right now, there's a substitute motion that is on the floor, and I'll turn it over to the city clerk to call the vote on the substitute motion that was made by Councilmember, oh, no, to, for the consideration of the substitute motion.
Okay, this is to accept the substitute motion.
Correct.
Councilmember Byers?
No.
Matthews?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Goldar?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cummings?
No. That passes with councilmembers Goldar, Watkins, Matthews, Vice Mayor Myers voting in favor to accept the substitute motion, councilmembers Brown, Byers, and Mayor Cummings voting opposed. And so now, at this point in time, we have the substitute motion before us. Bonnie, could you put that language back on the screen? Please?
Recognizing our currently protections in place under state law, the city can take action at the next meeting, prior to expiration of state protection.
Prior to what?
Expiration of state protection. And Tony, correct me if I'm understanding that wrong, but that's how I understand it. So we can, therefore, we continue it to the next meeting. Continue the items to the next meeting. Instructions to coordinate with the county to add anti-gouging efforts, and bring that, bring the items back.
So can I make a couple of minor suggestions?
Yeah, sure. I'm just trying to make complete sentences out of this.
Bear with me for a second while I read it through one more time. So my recommendation would be that you change the word recognizing to recognizes.
Oh, yeah. Is committed, recognizes, there are current protections under state law.
And, and then after state law, comma, that you insert the word and that?
Yes. And that the city can take action in the next phase for expiration of state protection.
After, therefore, the beginning of the next clause, therefore continues the item, so add an S after continue.
Yeah. With instructions to coordinate with the county's anti-gouging efforts, and bring the item back at our next meeting. At the next meeting, in the most efficient form from the city's procedural point of view.
I'd like to ask the maker in the second round of motion if there can be a couple things added to this as a friendly amendment. One, that we, number two, from the recommendation, which was direct the mayor to send a letter to California Governor.
Yeah, that's good.
So the language is included in the staff report.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
That's fine.
That we also send the language in today's agenda report to the county for consideration or reference. I don't know what the best, or, yeah, to the county for reference.
Yeah, that's fine. That was actually clearly implied in my comment about coordinating with the county.
And I would just offer to the council that I will also share it with the city attorneys for Scotts Valley and Capitol.
And Watsonville, yeah, with other jurisdictions in the county, yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And I would add also that we ask the county to provide guidance for residents who most immediately want to seek relief under the state protection.
Is it the, just to let them know how to file complaints?
Well, I would say, take action.
Can you restate that?
That we ask the county to provide guidance for local residents who want to pursue action regarding potential price gouging. That's not an apology in the attorney's.
Oh, do your grammar corrections before we.
And I'm also wondering if there's, within that city attorney's issue, the other cities' attorney, city attorneys in the county, whether there, you know, a letter should go to the other city councils from the mayor, letting them know that we're putting these into effect and to consider some more.
You know, I, why don't we just put, direct the city attorney and mayor to communicate our interest and agenda reports with other local jurisdictions? You just, we can both do it.
Or even like intentions and agenda reports?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think, you know, we're all headed in the same direction here.
Hmm. Okay. Well, I'm hoping this will get us in the right direction, and so we'll be looking forward to see what comes out of the county, and hopefully we can do our best to support our community. And although we didn't, you know, we weren't able to And although we didn't, you know, we weren't able to have something concrete today, I think we're all going in the right direction. Councilmember Goldar?
We're moving forward to, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind sharing that if there's some way we could be proactive in educating residents about, about ways to get reputable contractors to? Because I feel like that's another, that's, if gouging was going to happen, a huge, long-term problem.
Yeah.
It might be like, that's a bit of a heavy lift.
I know, even if it's just a list, even if it's just a list or something from the county of people that have, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't really know, just mentioning that they could, I don't know. Yeah, you're right, it is hard. But, but, I don't know.
I think that regard can be done at a staff level, but not really the topic, this agenda item, so.
No, I just meant, even not even within the city, I meant for the county, like in his conversations with the county.
Yeah.
Was something they could do. Not that I'm directing staff or, or, or the mayor to do it, just mentioning during conversations.
You know, I think something else we can consider is kind of strengthening that language around and having resources on our website for people who may feel like they are experiencing some form of exploitation so that people know who to contact. And then, yeah, to whatever degree we can figure out some kind of like Yelp or, you know, recommendation system for contractors, et cetera. And, yeah, we can think about how that might be able to happen.
Be careful what you wish for. I don't want the city to be running an alternative to Yelp.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 not, no.
Okay.
Maybe just like, yeah. Anyways, and I don't know if people have business licenses within the county, but just even just a list of people who have business licenses in the city. That's all, that's all I kind of was thinking, or business license in the county, so that, I don't know, I don't know what I'm thinking. I just, I just don't want people to be taking advantage of, and that's where my mind goes.
If I could make a final comment, generally, and I think it's in all the advice that goes out around any of this stuff, it says, seek a licensed contractor, et cetera. I mean, there's some general, you know, if you're going to put solar on your home, there's some general advice, and that's one of them. And even within that range, there's good and bad.
Okay. Well, with that, let's go ahead. If there's no further questions or comments, let's go ahead and take the roll call vote on this item. And then following this item, we will open up to oral communications.
Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Matthews?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Goldar?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So with that, we'll move on to our last item of this evening, which is oral communications. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on items that are not on our agenda. If you are streaming the meeting and you'd like to call in to comment during oral communications, now is the time. Please call one of the numbers that you see on your screen. Once you dial in, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will have two minutes to speak. When it's your time to speak, you'll hear an announcement that you've been unmuted, and we request that you clearly state your name before making your comments so that we can accurately capture it in the meeting minutes. However, that is not required.
Yeah, hi, this is Garrett Phillip again. Hey, I see my most excellent idea of proclaiming September White Man Appreciation Month was a no-show. I'm pretty sure that breakthrough idea is never going to happen, I suspect because of widespread prejudicial opinion. No rational being would think every German is a Nazi or every Muslim is a jihadist converter die crusader who thinks enforcing Sharia law has a place in the United States. Some individuals of those groups possibly are, think such, but the existence of some does not define all individuals in a group. Such is one of the many flaws embedded into the resentment hate-based group identity politics of the left, such as critical race theory, intersexualism, and white privilege myth. In the activist progressive leftist movement, supported by dozens of make-a-buck books, media, and leftist educators, white men are generally portrayed as universally racist and evil. This is a vile falsehood. Proclaiming White Man Appreciation Month would go a little ways toward rightfully burying that false narrative and is really no different than the reasons to proclaim an appreciation month for any group. Also, what a great office watercooler eyebrow raiser. If the awazwas, who really don't have a recognized valid land treaty claim, can get an unseated land declaration reminder ad nauseam almost every meeting for unfortunate events occurring hundreds of years ago, one would think in real time, white men could get appreciation once anyway, because white men do have deeds and pay plenty for, you'd think, appreciated government salaries. Stranger things have happened. On a different matter, I see the slow streets has been implemented so far according to my anticipated fears. It consists of street closed through traffic signs, which technically means the street is closed to general public travel after, as I recall, staff promised that wouldn't happen. Yep, we have special interest people who wanted their public street converted into their private street for their sole personal private satisfaction, using COVID hysteria justifications. With a vast experience daily dog walking some of these streets, there are no traffic or other justifications for these conversions. You've been had. Bye.
Okay, next speaker.
Hello, I'm Sebastian Stock, a resident. The city is coming off yet another record-breaking heat wave. The heat presents hardships to all of us, especially to the city's homeless. The biggest cause of homelessness is the shortage of homes. The council recognizes this. Each of you campaigned on building more affordable housing, but the city looks essentially the same as it was at the time of the last election. I don't suggest the council's ignore the issue. I commend the decision to expand the building height limit to seven stories and to convert the Garfield Circles Church into a single-family housing complex, even though multifamily housing would definitionally be able to house more people. But that's the point. It's something, this is a crisis. Crises require alacrity, not fussing about whether more people might be housed in imaginary proposal. Unfortunately, the City Planning Commission has done exactly that, voting on an amendment that will further delay the construction of the seven-story apartment complex on the San Lorenzo Riverfront that would have 175 housing units, including 20 low-income units, out of the hope that they could wrangle, and I quote, 26 low-income units instead. The project has been waiting approval for over a year, during which period, of course, no one has been housed in the area. This is no isolated incident, but is illustrative of a decades-long failed housing policy that has led to a housing shortage so severe that the purchasing power for housing in Santa Cruz is less than 80% of the national average. Search Santa Cruz Housing Ranking on the web and you'll find the phrases "crushingly unaffordable," "least affordable city in California," and "the nation's least affordable city for teachers." Whose fault do we think this is? Santa Cruz has been a liberal stronghold for decades. We can't blame Donald Trump. It is our fault.
Hey, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak to us on oral communications, now is the time to call in, using the numbers on your screen. Once you've called into the meeting, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and once you've been unmuted, you'll get, you'll be given two minutes to speak. There was a caller, but they just hung up, so I'll give that person another minute to call back in. If you could please press star nine on your phone, you'll be given two minutes to speak. If your last four digits are 0443, please press stars to unmute. Hello?
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Susan Cavalieri. I'm requesting that the garage complex on Lot Four not be built. We need this space for the majestic heritage trees to cool the city center as the temperatures, as the temperatures soar. These trees not only provide shade, but purify the air, absorb carbon dioxide, and release oxygen. We know the state is burning. Excessive heat has dried vegetation and fires have burned over 2 million acres because of climate heating. Many children are experiencing the climate crisis now and have lost their homes to these fires. Many more children have needed to quickly gather their prized possessions and evacuate with their families as smoke and ash fall, fill the air. Many of our youth fear for their future. If our children are to have a future, emissions must be reduced to near zero over the next 10 years. Transportation is the biggest producer of emissions in our county. Therefore, transportation needs to shift away from gas-burning cars and SUVs to electric vehicles, bikes, walking, and fare-free transit. With fewer cars, there is no need to build a garage on Lot Four. To decrease emissions, we do need to save the heritage trees and not build the garage. The city needs to ban the removal of heritage trees, and I believe the city needs to prioritize policies that reduce emissions for the sake of our children. Please do not build the garage complex on Lot Four, save the trees, and renovate the existing library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no new callers on oral communications, I'd just like to bring it back to council. Thank you all for joining us today and for this meeting, and thank you to the staff, and hope that everyone continues to stay safe out there. That concludes our meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.